The next item on our agenda. Our committee report. We have three, the first three are Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee minutes in workshop, which I'm sure all of the members have read. They were in our agenda. Phil, are you, is there anything particular in those that you need to comment on?
No, there isn't. In fact, I'm confused why they're here. I've never seen that before.
Oh, okay.
Why do we put the minutes in there? You read the minutes, it's the minutes of the minutes. Can't understand why they're even on the agenda.
Well, we'll get into that later. How about the Stony Brook minutes of March 9th and April 13th? Anything in there you've got to highlight for?
I can just make a couple quick comments.
Please.
Joe McCulca, Chairman of the Stony Brook Advisory Committee, and I live on Greenstone Drive in Stony Brook. In the April meeting, we did say that we would be starting a speed traps in the community because, just like many other communities, and I know that Pelican is having the same issue with speeding.
Trap?
Well, we have, we are paying police officers to sit there and-
Monitoring.
Monitor and hand out tickets.
A little better.
And we started on Tuesday. And we've also started some landscaping that had been approved, and just to say that. But I do want to say something. I know that several months ago, you had mentioned that, I forgot who it was, it might have been someone from the Pelican Committee, that you had installed these signs that were giving you a blinking light and maybe taking a picture. And I asked the comment then, what do you do with it? And what are you doing with that information? Is there anything? Because your hands are somewhat tied, and we're frustrated because we're having a major parking issue right now. We actually set up a committee, and we are looking for some opinions on that also.
The next board meeting, they be memo to the board about the ability to tow vehicles on district property in areas where they are designated as no parking.
And one of the things I'd like you to also address in there, because in that new law, it made reference to but not limited to, and that's that classic gray area that maybe we could do something a little bit less than tow. And just to consider it, take another look at that. Do you know what I mean? Food for thought. That's it. I'm just wondering, what are, what is Pelican doing about the speeding problem?
Well, you can talk to Phil or somebody.
Okay, no problem.
But this is not, this is not the agenda for that.
No problem. Anybody have any questions about what's in the minutes?
No, thank you.
I'm done.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Phil.
Phil, do you have anything particularly about the Safety and Security Work Group?
Phil Meesey, 9296 Tri-S Drive, here representing the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. You have my, you have our monthly report. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things in it. Number one, there are some of the reasons, some of the statements about the budget are a little bit of a misstatement as to what's causing some of the increases. I won't go over it in great detail, but we do have a budget with Stephen, and it's part of something that you'll be going over today. We also have concerns about certain allocations to Pelican Preserve that we think are probably not appropriate.
We're going to talk about them.
But I would assume that would come up in the budget situation. We also have some concerns about both road and pond turnover, as to things that we think still need to be done before those turnovers occur. Even though the engineers have done their complete checklist, we think there are things that need to be done, and I think that will come up at a meeting where you, where you talk about turnover, potential turnover of both the roads and also the ponds. There's still things that we think, we think need to be done. With regard to the-
Phil, can I stop you?
Yeah.
Danny, are you aware of what I've already-
I've already informed Danny, and he said they're not part of the checklist. On the roads.
On the roads.
On the roads. That's correct. And Bob Geppert was part of a meeting with the staff, and he expressed, and the people who are going over the pond turnover, the things that he still feel needs to be done with regard to the ponds before the ponds are turned over.
So what are you, that's an old, so what are you, so what are you? So what are you? How do you put it? How do you spell it?
We can certainly, if there are issues with, you know, with the road that are outside of the checklist, we can certainly ask, you know, for those issues to be addressed.
Yeah. Well, I will reference an email that I sent to Danny and to the staff, where we specified three things, one of which has already been taken care of. It has to do with the signage, and he said the signage is adequate. But we have two further concerns. One is lighting on Cypress Grove. The lighting is, we believe, inadequate, and particularly at the corner of Cypress Grove and Pelican Preserve Boulevard. In addition, we also have the golf cart crossing. So there is a crossing of golf carts on Cypress Grove that is an accident waiting to happen. It is an incredible safety problem, I believe. There are cars coming around corners that cannot see golf carts.
Over the hill and on the line.
It's the ones, it's the one coming around the corner that is the real safety issue. And I think we have to do something to reroute the golf carts or do something to resolve that problem before we take that road over, because that is an accident waiting to happen.
Okay. We'll get into that, but that's not for tonight.
That's what I thought, yes. So I'm willing Gary to ask the question, and it seems to-
I think we need a list of those items, and we need that carried forward some way.
That's absolutely right.
Well, we-
Could you create draft?
I've already given it to Danny, but I will send the same information to everybody.
Would you forward it on to Mr. Guy?
I certainly will do that. And April, April has a copy, and in fact, she said she was going to put it in her report when they, when you meet about the turnover. Is that correct? Am I interpreting that correctly?
That is correct, to make sure that the committee is represented on the document that you received for the motion for approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Guy, one other aspect, I'll provide it to Mr. Meesey, too, that WCI still has not addressed issues relating to Cypress Grove that were raised over three years ago. Raise one.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's been lingering.
All right. So this, these should be very graphic, you know? Not that they kind of fall underneath the carpet someplace, but it should be a very graphic layout so that we all can make sure that all that gets done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Phil.
I'll go on to, just very quickly, I wanted to highlight the Safety and Security Work Group. We are going to be undertaking the traffic study that the board told us to undertake. But we also have, and I sent you, we have concerns about that study. Nonetheless, we will do what we were told. I would like to make one statement about what Ms. Schaefer said. She said we've been telling people to drive their golf carts in the, in the regular traffic lanes. There hasn't been anything about that in any of the weekly letters for at least three months. That is, so that was a misstatement that I had, I felt necessary to correct.
Thank you, Phil. Ladies and gentlemen, we are at item number four, the Consent Agenda, Approval of the May 5th Meeting Minutes, Field Management Report for Lakes and Preserve, the First Amendment to the Gateway Water Meter Replacement Project Agreement.
Yeah, I want to pull Stormwater Management.
Say again, Gary, what do you want to do?
I want to chat a little bit about page 77, please.
I'm sorry.
Stormwater Management.
I'm sorry. Which, which?
Stormwater Management, page 77, please. Two pages, actually, page 77 and page 79.
It's 4B.
4B, yeah.
4B.
And 81.
All right.
77, 79, and 81.
April?
Yes.
Can you put up page 77 on the, on our agenda?
Okay, here we go.
So are you, Gary?
Okay. Item D, Lake Bank Erosion. We continue to discovery, we continue to discover, small areas where a resident is trying to do something, anything, but from the methods they're using, it's clear they have a lack of knowledge what to do or limited resources, so they end up exasperating the problem. What have we done to communicate with these people, to stop these people?
This is the same one, I'll bet, that we looked at two months ago, which-
What have we done?
Anything, anything to report on what has been done?
What have we done to communicate and not do that? You know? And this is current. This is May 25th, so this isn't something that's, hey, new power, you're talking about something a month old, we've already fixed it, no?
Are you, are you asking, April White, your Operations Manager, are you asking if we've addressed this one particular area, or have we implemented an education program?
No, I want to know that you have done something specifically about this specific thing that's an item of itself. Have you corrected the problem since it's an ongoing problem?
I am not, I am not aware of the status of that. I would have to check with Elle on that, because I have not sat with her to review this report yet.
Okay.
Okay, that's disappointing. Number F, recommended, they talk about the annual cutback walkthrough, and in the last sentence, which is actually the last two sentences, recommendation for this to be done during late winter, early spring, when waters are at the lowest, so items inaccessible. This would include known items that also may be just too heavy to remove by one person. What kind of trash is accumulating that's so burdensome that one adult can't move it? And why are we letting it get to that point?
Doesn't necessarily mean that you show it.
That's item out.
I saw this yesterday. I don't do this report, this is my, I can ask. I saw a picture of a fire extension, that's all I saw. He's looking for a response from you.
Again, I have not had an opportunity to review this with Elle, and one of the things that I would, I'm curious about is why we don't have pictures. I know the inspection report that we do, so I don't know what the items are that are too heavy to remove.
There are some pictures later on, which I'm referencing, and last, on this particular page, the last item would be Lake 57, where it says staff to write a letter to homeowner. We keep getting that over and over again, but we keep getting that over and over again. Page 79, if you take a look at the last photo, Lake 60, what's going on? Anybody? Danny, have you seen this picture at all? Lake 60, 5B?
Other than in the meeting book, no, I've not.
Doesn't look like a 4 to 1 slope, huh?
Has issues.
Thank you for sharing that with me.
That's more than you want.
That's a professional opinion.
Yeah, but, boy, that's a good one. And maybe, April, if you look at page 81 and you look at the picture of Lake 57, you'll see some of the stuff that's there in this, kind of in the bottom center of the photo.
Is that, is that rock?
It looks like rock and trees.
But it looks like there's a tree right there.
Looks like a dead tree. Yeah.
And then there's a bunch of like rocks, crushed stone, and then there's the bigger stuff. But those tubular type things, you see what I'm talking about? Kind of like gray tubes in the front center?
There's a lot of trees.
Kind of weary.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, is we're just kind of, we're not getting it done.
Can we just agree that we've got a way to go?
Yeah, we'll agree that we're not getting it done.
Are you finished for now?
I'm done.
So what, what would we do on that? I mean, are we responsible to, is that our responsibility to clean that? So?
And/or communicate, and I've been for only eight years going, communicate, communicate, communicate.
Yeah, okay.
Not happening.
That's a homeowner's responsibility.
That is?
Yeah. On the other hand, if South Florida Water Management comes along-
It will be our responsibility.
Thank you very much. And we already paid quite a hefty fine eight years ago.
Don't get into that. Anything else we want to discuss on item four, A, B, or C, before we have a motion for approval?
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
For A, B, and C.
Items four, A, B, and C, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote 4-0. Item five is discussion items, Proposed Fiscal Year 17 Operating and Debt Service Budgets, Version 2. Mr. Stephen, would you please come to the podium and identify yourself for the record?
Stephen Bloom, Severn Trent. Before we get started on the budget, I just kind of wanted to kind of begin with the end for a second. On Agenda Page 152, just so everyone is on the same page as to what we're trying to accomplish today, there's a resolution for the board to approve, which would set your public hearing as well as the actions today will set the maximum assessment rate that you can put on there, and that rate will then be advertised, and notices will go out to all the residents. So that's kind of what we're trying to accomplish today, is really to set the maximum rate, which, you know, again, that means we can still have additional discussions between now and August 18th, or even at the August 18th meeting, but those discussions would all be with the intent to either maintain the current assessment level, which is in your budget, or reduce. So that's just kind of, wanted to make sure everybody was good with that, then we can kind of go through, you know, we've included in here your complete budget, including the two capital project funds as well, which is in, I think, the next agenda item, but obviously we can kind of go back and forth.
I look to you. I want you to give me your opinion regarding that question, which you said to us essentially, the fact of satisfied with the current rate, et cetera. I depend tremendously on you, so please give me your-
Sure. I think this, the page right here is, gives you a kind of a top-level overview on where you're at. In actuality, when you look at the, the plain, normal operating general fund, the budget for next year is actually going down by about $5,300. Where your increase is, and again, one of the things we did with this version was we pulled out the loan and the Lake Bank projects and put it into its own fund. And what that does is that shows you, you know, that your general fund actually will be running less next year, and your increases, in particular for, related to the general fund, is related to the loan, you know? And so, and overall, I think your budget has a lot of good stuff in it that we've been talking about, and we go through that. A lot of, you know, repairs and the maintenance items, we've gone over, you know, wanting to make sure they were there, and they're now in your budget, and we were able to do that while also kind of maintaining your, your base general fund flat. Part of the reason why we did that is we were able to lower the transfer to your capital projects down by about $100,000, but that was always increased, that was increased last year anticipation of the loan, trying to get that set. So I think it's good to see that you're not seeing another 10% increase in the general fund, so overall, you know, I think the budget is pretty solid. Where we're going to have to go and look at today is, are you comfortable with this increase? Is there any other place you want to trim? And again, doesn't have to be answered all today, but we certainly want to take a look at that, and you want to take a look at the repairs and maintenance lines, because we created a completely separate schedule now for you to see them all, and that was kind of one of the things we talked about at the first time we introduced the budget. Anything that's repair and maintenance is in your general fund. Anything that's replacement is in your capital project budget now. So we're splitting that out, so you can kind of hopefully digest this, this big budget a little bit differently.
And the irrigation system, which we referenced back to, which is 20x number of years of age and degenerating, like me, where does that, capital improvement, repairs?
We have some money in repairs right now, and we also have some money in the capital plan. Now, what we have to decide is, based on the ages, is that enough?
Exactly. And last question is, in your mind, in general, rate study, do we need another one? Don't we need another one? You're pretty, are you okay?
I'm good right now, because you're, you're still under your old plan, which every year, it's still increasing.
Right.
So you still have, you know, I think it's, when I looked at the last time, two more years of increases.
I think it is.
So in that sense, I mean, I think you, you've already got some stuff built in, you've got, obviously, new residents coming online, which is going to increase your revenue, and, you know, once the meter program is complete, then you'll have, you know, any additional bump in that as well.
Okay.
So I think until you get some more things settled, I think you can run the report now, but I'm not sure you're going to get as much, you know, good information yet, but it's still got to be, you know, a discussion.
Right.
Now, just so you know, every year, and this is part of, of your loan, we're required to do a mini rate study.
Yeah.
Which means I go through, look at your revenue, look at your increases, look at all of your expenses, and I project five more years out. So I'll know quicker if I'm seeing something, and basically, I'm going to be looking to make sure you're covering your debt per year requirements and everything else.
When will you finish that projection, Stephen?
It's usually done at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
But I can certainly give you the one from last year, if you want to take a look at it.
Excellent.
Because we do it every year.
Would you please?
Sure.
Thanks.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Pam?
All right. Doug?
No, I'm good.
Steve, I have two questions. I'm on page 94, which is the one that's up on the agenda. I want to, I want to hear you say that what we're looking at in Fund 02 Pelican Preserve, the 7.7 increase are the numbers that you have received from the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee, and-
These, yes. These are the numbers I've received, but as Phil mentioned, you know, the only caveat in there is the turnover. There is no money in there right now if, if there were any of this turnover to, to occur.
What are you talking about?
If any, you were mentioning from WCI, is there something that-
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay.
There are, and I mentioned that. Phil Meesey, Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee, I think we mentioned in the report that we don't, we do not have money in there to take, for the, to take care of the ponds in Cypress Grove for the remainder of this year. And then, we do have money in for next, for the fiscal year 2017. There is no money in there, we understand that WCI is working on turning the preserves over to us. We have no money in, that is not in that 7.7% increase. We have no money in there to take over the preserves. And we're frankly at a loss. We don't know at this point exactly how much expense that is. We don't think it's a huge expense, but there is, there is no, there is no money in there to take, for us to take over the maintenance of the preserves.
You understand, I shouldn't say that.
Yeah.
I believe that we're going to have to pass a resolution tonight that sets our, our, what do you call, high watermark, our upper limit.
Yes.
Is that not so?
That is correct.
Well, it's unfair to ask you to come up with another number right now for preserves and other things you don't know. However, is there any, do you want to do, do you want to put anything different in these numbers?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it seems to me that our approach has got to be with WCI, that they're going to have to absorb those costs, because they haven't, they haven't provided us with any information that would allow us to even put a number in there.
Okay.
And that we're going to have to say to them, through fiscal years-
17.
17, you're going to have to keep absorbing those, those costs, because-
Well, we can fix that by not, not accepting anything from them, can we not?
That's correct. Yeah. So I, you know, I think, I think-
Yes, sir, or accepting it if we can budget it.
Contingency.
Accepting subject to-
With the, with the amount of money.
That's right. They could transfer the funds to us, I guess.
Yes.
They could transfer the funds to us to cover it, ex-budget, and that would be another way to handle it.
But the amount of the funds critically has to be defined.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and they haven't defined it yet, and they have not given us that information as yet. We do, we do believe that we've, we're covered for the ponds for next year, so that, that's, and that's the primary reason, actually, that we have, the lion's share of this increase is, is, has to do with absorbing Cypress Grove and the costs relevant to Cypress Grove, so that's the reason we have that kind of an increase.
Well, I want, I want to put, I want to put this board on record, that we're not going to accept any of that stuff from WCI without your recommendation. Is anybody okay with, with all of that?
Oh, that isn't okay, that's just the only way it's going to be.
Yes, yeah, yes, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Phil.
Now, the rest of that question, because there's still more to it, there is probably some other money in there, just in case there's an emergency within the 7.7 to cover it. In addition to that, a question that was asked at the last meeting about an allocation between the general fund and the Pelican Preserve.
That's on page 120.
And, yeah, and we talked again about this week, and the bottom line is, is-
Make sure you won't give you a minute to get to it.
Yeah, and basically, and the discussion was related to the Natural Resources Supervisor, and why 22%, and should that come down?
No, it really related to the facility's maintenance specialists. Well, it was natural, yeah, I'm sorry, the 22% of the Natural Resources Supervisor, and also the facility maintenance specialist, who we don't use. I don't think the facility, if I know who the facility, if Elle is the facility's maintenance specialist, we don't use her services. We don't want her services. We don't see why we should be allocated 10% of her, 10% of her-
And you don't want to pay for her services. I said, and you don't want to pay for her-
We don't want to pay for her services. We, you know, why should, you know, we're not talking about a huge sum of money here, but nonetheless, why should we, why should we get, why should we get those costs?
The bottom line, though, is staff has, has agreed that those percentages need to come down.
Yeah.
So my point is, is assuming you keep the, the assessment rate the same as it is right now, you're going to get back already another, you know, 10-whatever thousand dollars that you can put into a contingency, just in case you do need to pick up something related to the preserves.
Okay.
Have you come up with the number, though, Stephen? I mean, you've still given us a little bit of ambiguity.
The, well, the number I came up with was really related to the Natural Resources Supervisor, which I addressed at, was another, I believe, $9,000, when we changed the percentages down to about-
Were you okay?
10%.
Phil, were you okay?
Yeah.
Now, if you're going to throw in-
I'm okay on that.
Okay.
But we shouldn't get any of the facility's maintenance specialists.
We'll have another discussion about that one. I was really focusing on the bigger amount, but we can, we can talk about that, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
And there are a couple of things on the page before that.
119?
Yeah, I don't have the page in front of me.
That's okay.
But, no, I guess it, if you go to the, Stephen, the place where all the, all the overhead expenses are.
Oh, um, let's see what page that is.
You know, where you show, you show all the overhead and how they're allocated.
No, not there.
No.
111, Agenda Page 111. Yeah, this is, this is the split of some of the-
Yes, right, exactly, right there. You know, there are things here, again, we're not talking, we're not talking about huge numbers, but if you go down, you know, we're getting allocated for team events and team uniforms. And I, you know, I don't, that, that doesn't have anything to do with us, as far as I know, unless there's something I don't hope about that.
Well, and again, we can, we can adjust those, but the basic idea about these two departments were that they were reflective of the entire district, and each of the three major funds were getting a certain percentage of the whole, the whole kit and kaboodle type of a deal. We can certainly, you know, go through that if there's something in there that maybe shouldn't be. This is really more of how it's kind of been set up for several years, and most of the items are so small that it really hasn't warranted any-
I, I, I mean, it's, we're not going to make a big issue like that.
Thank you. But I think you're establishing the precedent for the future.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Steve, can we go back to that first page that we were looking at when you began your presentation?
Yes. Yes.
That's it, right there. I don't want my bureaucratic experience to show too much. But when I see a general fund actually reducing in budget, I have to ask myself, why exactly is that? And especially in concert with the fact that Hampton Park and other places are coming online that are going to require our services. It just, there's a dichotomy in my mind that I can't work through. Can you help me?
Sure. The big pieces, and again, we can go through and look at the, there's actually a variance column to show you on the general fund. But big pieces in terms of where you've been able to show savings, one is your propane natural gas. We reduce that quite a bit. And then the other is by reducing the capital program or the transfer to it, those are the two big lines.
Down to one fifty?
Down to one fifty. It was, we had budgeted two fifty-five, and it's down to one fifty. So that's right there, a hundred thousand that we were, you know, changed.
Why wouldn't you want to put that up so at least we have a zero variance from last year?
Well, zero variance from last year is fifty-three hundred dollars. So, I mean, you could, if you wanted to, you could, you know, put the fifty-three hundred dollars in there. I didn't push it only because the new fund was such a large increase. That was really the only reason why.
Yeah, but that's a whole different issue. Where I'm headed is that the fiscal seventeen then will become the baseline or the starting point for future budgets. And if it's lower than it should be or ought to be or could be, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I guess part of that depends upon the level of comfort with the repair and maintenance lines. Because if staff is going to be able to achieve, you know, the level repairs, you know, that the community wants at what's currently in the budget, then I think you're fine. If we're short somewhere, then that's where we can make it up and try and pick up a little bit more.
Well, then just put that, put some more in that repair and maintenance line and...
Sure. I mean, we can certainly level it out. That's easy.
There's no sense in having a reduction when we have new areas come online.
Sure. Just keep in mind, when we built the budget, we built it from a zero base, meaning we didn't carry anything over and start. So this is kind of from the ground up, what staff put together. But sure, we can certainly put that money into reserve, I mean, into repair. There's plenty of places to choose from.
Okay. With, you know, with those comments, I'm fine with the, with the general fund operation. But we've, and the O one two four etc.
Well, and also part of some of that money is going to get eaten up when I switch the percentages that we just talked about.
Yeah, I understand.
Even that will take care of it, so you...
Is now the time to get into the capital, the CIP budget?
You do not have to unless you choose to take a look at it.
Oh, I think we definitely need to take a look at it.
It's, we wanted to give you the opportunity to ask some questions and maybe provide some guidance. The big piece, the real reason why I wanted to include this would be to answer the question. Basically, if staff had all these projects approved, would the reserve be able to fund it, you know, for the year? So that's kind of why we wanted to make sure we included everything in here. And the answer to that is yes. So, but other than that, we can go through and look at, look at the projects. I think the big project that's in there, and it's not just the general fund, it's also the enterprise fund, is the office building expansion.
Yes, we've got to talk about that. We've got to make an overt decision on that.
And without that, I mean, you really, you look at one, page one twenty-six, kind of looks at the projects instead of the numbers. That's the big, big ticket item, you know, so assuming that...
But there are a couple others in there.
There are. There certainly are, but I think that's kind of the, you're right. There's some other big numbers that are new. Some of the other ones are kind of reoccurring projects that we've talked about, but you can make that a little bit bigger. We can go through that.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, last year, we had quite a bit of success in going through these capital improvement plan items. And this isn't going to come out exactly right. We agreed that everything that Steve had in the budget was fine with the exception of. And on four, five, or six, or seven of them, we had some significant conversation and ended up with a specific vote on those items so that everybody would understand that they were either in our capital improvement for the year or they were not. Having said that, I think that the first one that we ought to talk about is the office building expansion. For the general fund, it's two hundred and forty thousand dollars. For the enterprise fund, it's another almost six hundred. The total's eight hundred thousand dollars. Is that so?
That's correct, eight hundred thousand dollars.
All right.
What is that based on, Phil? Is that just a ballpark figure, or has there been an assessment?
Yes. Danny actually put together a top level, and I'll speak for him for a second here, but you can talk more about it, that I believe the number that he had put in was like six hundred thousand total. And then staff added some additional things like furniture and so forth to get to the eight hundred thousand. But the core amount, the six hundred thousand, was based on a plan that Danny put together.
Are we talking about this now, or are you just calling out?
No, we're talking about it right now. We're going to go through and assume that all of these items are going to be accepted, except these big ones, which we have absolutely got to have some conversation with so that we know how the board feels, and the staff knows how the board wants to proceed on these things. Okay? You okay?
Yeah.
So, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I would like to hear a conversation about the office building expansion, not only for the general fund but for the enterprise fund, and should that be in the fiscal seventeen budget? Gary?
My suggestion is, is we should have started really at the top and just gone...
Oh, we're only talking about sixteen hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-two hundred and fifty bucks.
Again, we've got people that are out there that are paying that.
What?
Okay, it's out of your pocket. No problem.
It's minutia. Let's get, let's take center of time on the, on the big stuff.
If you had to pay it, it wouldn't be minutia, Bill.
If I had sixteen thousand people, I would. What are your feelings about the office expansion?
We've been told that they need the building expanded, that they need the extra space. If they need the extra space, they need the extra space. If people are crowded, if people are sharing spaces, people can't have a designated workspace that they're not in a public type situation, then we need, we need to do something. Pam?
I guess, well, what are the plans? Had anybody, maybe I've not been here for what the exact expansion, what it's going to...
Revenue requirements, Danny, for April, is there a, is there a list of, here's the things that we need to address? Are we expanding the building? What's the type thing?
Yeah, I can, I can email this to you later. How this came about was, I think it was actually probably eight months ago, staff put together a plan for a temporary expansion through putting, for lack of a better word, portables underneath the, the space outside under the bays. That was discussed with board. It wasn't, you know, received. So we put together a plan based on staff input of, conceptually, what you could do with the existing space you have with expanding the air-conditioned space, and then expanding the building to make up for your non-conditioned space. So it was, it's really conceptual. So the actual design, there is, I mean, there's...
Expansion in the back.
Expansion in the back. So it's more or less just, here's what you can do, and here's what we estimate the cost to be. There, yes, there was a plan that would show office space, but there is no design that would need to be programmed to basically what your needs are.
What I was saying, for, are we going this way? Are we going that way? So we're going to go, go to the bay, transition that into office space, and then build the bays out behind there?
Right.
And have our utility...
And then, in addition to that, there are also building improvements that need to be made, regardless of whether or not you expand. And when you walk into the building, if you'll just look down, you'll see what we're talking about as part of it. And then there's also, you know, safety issues such as addressing fire suppression and things like that that you may consider even if you don't do a building expansion, so.
Do you know, what's the square footage back there that will be, so we're going to eat into both those two bays?
No, there is actually, there are really three bays there. Two are actually being used as bays. The third is kind of like where they have their, you know, storage vending area and their recreation or their leisure, you know, area. Their first bay. So that would actually be where we're talking about into those first two bays as to making. I don't off the top of my head.
Additionally, another thing is, is for the staff to be able to actually have a place to eat while they're eating in the garage.
I can email that to you, and it has all of that information. In fact, I can probably email that to you right now.
Just for those that are listening in for the board, I went back through the, it was Joe De Servo's report where they're capturing staff feedback, and I categorized the responses. I put them either procedure, there was facilities, there was, I categorized. And lack of facilities was one of the tall bars. As a matter of fact, I think we're either one or two behind lack of procedure or management oversight or something along those lines. And those of you that are probably here today and on the board, you spend enough time in this building. When you see the staff on top of each other, if you are working under those conditions, it would be very difficult for you to get your job done. We have more space into this board that gets used two Thursdays out of the month, and our staff does on a day-to-day basis. So I think expanding the space is well overdue. I think it's needed. And if we can do it within, Danny, you know, would you say six or eight? What's the, what's the, what's the target, the estimate, was it six hundred? What was the number?
Yeah, I think it was around six hundred and...
That was the initial, but then it pops up.
I'm sure it's probably between six and eight.
Danny, could you shoot those plans over to me? I think I was absent on that.
Yeah, I'll email. You were absent, yes.
Yes, thank you.
But this is, we're earmarking that eight hundred thousand will actually have, you know, do a formal assessment of what's needed.
Yes. Yeah, I wouldn't move forward with what you see.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
It's going to be, there's conference rooms that, right now, they don't even have a good place for reviewing contracts.
I mean, there's, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And is, what's in scope? Is it, is it building, are the, anything exterior as far as the parking area, is that covered at all?
There, you're, there may be some soft costs. A couple of the options we looked at is, one of the issues I have with your current space is we have generators, we have things that aren't used on a regular basis that are taking up base space that could actually be used on a daily basis. So one consideration, which I think is included in those costs, is actually putting a small storage facility outside. Parking was discussed, it was, it was considered. So, yeah, those costs would be in that, in that eight hundred thousand.
And one thing to consider, and I don't know if the timing is down, but we, I think we get about fifteen for storage.
Thirteen thousand a year?
Thirteen thousand a year for storage. And how many, do we know how many?
Slots.
Yeah, how many slots we have?
I'm thinking fifty...
Fifty. My point is, there's a waiting lot, there's a waiting line for storage. And this is really, it was a brilliant idea at the time to be able to offer storage for our residents and to be able to generate some revenue. I think if there's, you know, an opportunity to relocate that, and we do have some viable areas, and really all you need is just some fencing, and you just need great material on the grounds. It wouldn't be a high cost. But we can probably not only double, but almost triple our revenue income in our storage alone. We want to talk about offset revenue. Revenue is hard to find in our environment, so it's just something to consider.
Are you going to triple your revenue?
By relocating our storage to another location. Whether it's behind the, the location behind the soccer field, or, and I don't know all the available...
Oh, I see, okay.
But just food for dogs.
We're going to have an elevated dog park that was going to be a portico that we parked this up underneath.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I have, I definitely have the feeling that we are going to authorize the office building expansion as it's in the capital improvement budget. Am I correct?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. All in favor, say aye.
Yes, is there a motion?
I motioned. It's the local motion.
We'll get it, the motion will get on then. Did you have something else that you wanted to say?
No, I'm fine with, I just, I had not heard the plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's get down to the hundred thousand soccer complex. Please, can you delineate that for me in a little bit more detail?
Sure. The items included in that, resurface parking lot, garbage bin storage facility, remodel restrooms, remodel concession stand, build-out building or equipment storage. Yeah, those are, that's the project description.
So that goes in line with the next line, which is another seventy-nine thousand dollars, coming up with a total of four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for the soccer complex.
Over, over the next four years, right?
How are we doing with the seventy-nine thousand for last year?
I think we've done one, one, oh, is that like per pole?
Is that field one, though?
I'm not sure which field it is, but I know we've, I know we've done one so far. They've been working on it. But it's expensive just to replace one, one of those big light poles. And I'm not, I'm not familiar exactly what the seventy-nine thousand dollars entail. What would it be? Can it be eighty thousand dollars?
No, no, it's not. Well, I think it was one, one field.
Yeah, so, so far year-to-date, we spent about twelve thousand.
Shocking. What the cost is, Danny can give, Doug, Danny can give you some. Well, we, we tried to essentially rebuild it. And we had part of Tetra Tech involved in, one of your guys was in...
For the lighting?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Share that, please.
Yeah, that was, in fact, it went out to bid, and just to do the repair work was, what, nearly a hundred thousand dollars just to do really routine, basic repair work. Yeah, and I think that the district had talked to Musco, who's like the largest, you know, lighting, sports lighting manufacturer, and had gotten pricing to do full replacement. And I don't, I don't recall those numbers. I think they did share it.
They're big.
Yeah, you're talking, you're talking in excess of a million dollars for the lighting, so.
Yeah. Yeah. And of course, that's, that's our other enterprise fund, he said facetiously.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, are you happy? Happy is not the right word.
No.
With the hundred thousand and the seventy-nine, the way it's here?
Well, I know that, I don't know when the last time that parking lot's been resurfaced. It's in pretty bad shape. So that's, I know that's something that's definitely needed. There is no storage over there.
Would we be better off ignoring the parking lot and putting it in the, in the...
Are you resurfacing, resurfacing it, or are you sealing it?
I don't know that sealing would say anything more than a Band-Aid.
Well...
I mean, could we, but, could we, instead of actually hard surfacing, do crush stone?
No, you don't want to do that.
Why not? Why not?
Have you ever had kids with cleats walking off stone and then getting in your car? It's, uh...
You don't, my God, Doug, you don't give your children an extra pair of shoes?
I'll send my Ford to your house.
Come on, Doug.
But again, it's, I mean, I don't think it's viable.
I think we, we need to...
End it with the reins and everything else. Wash it out.
That's a good point.
That's a good thought.
You ought to come up to our place in North Carolina.
So where could we cut this a little bit, maybe?
And why do you want to cut it? Just because you think it's too much?
We want a lot.
Just because that's partially our job?
I'm just, I'm asking Pam why.
I do, I do, I think, I think it is, it's a lot for this budget. If we could bring it down a bit.
Would you be happy if we moved some of that hundred into the lighting replacement? Because we're going to have, that, that has to be done.
Right.
That's a sa- that's a safety item, without a doubt.
That's a safety item, so not, not the seventy-nine.
No.
But the hundred thousand, where, how, what can we do?
Do you remember what the list, what is the list again for a hundred thousand, Stephen? I'm sorry.
Sure.
And is it broken out into individual or just?
Not by, not by dollar amount, but I can just give you the, uh, resurface parking lot, garbage bin, storage facility.
So that's the, just the, the dumpster, something around the dumpster.
Right. Remodel restrooms, remodel concession stand, and then, uh, build-out building for storage, for equipment storage.
Do we know what the remodel concession stand, what that entails?
We don't have, I don't have anything further broken on that.
You don't know what that, it's just lumped in?
No, it's all lumped in. I mean, really what Steph's trying to do, you know, obviously they don't go out and get quotes for all of this. They just try and put together a round number for some of this. Now, uh, one thing to keep in mind, uh, when you're talking about your capital, um, project budget, everything, the spending's gonna come out of the, the capital reserve. So my point is, if you reduce this or increase this, it's not gonna change your assessments that you're gonna be levying for, uh, next year. Uh, it'll just change how much of the reserves. So you do have the option to leave these numbers in here a little bit higher with the idea later you're gonna trim them, like the building or, or, you know, the, so it's, 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 my point is, is you're not billing anybody extra at this point.
We don't have to spend this.
Right.
We're just allocating.
You have a bank of money, just like a checking account, and you go in, when you do approve this down the line, you'll approve to spend whatever the plans show.
And if, if I may add, um, I was going back through a lot of the budget documentation and I apologize, I don't have the header memo of the document that I found regarding the Sherman complex. So I don't have the date, but I'm almost certain that this was a two thousand and thirteen document that was compiled. Um, I can definitely, uh, go into the binder and look at that. But this was basically something that had been put together, um, it was an evaluation of the Sherman complex, evaluated, um, the leagues, the usage, and, um, what was needed to, you know, bring the field up to, to a better, a better quality for, for the participants. So I really was kind of just re- revitalizing old, old issues.
Right, and I think that quote was what, ninety-something for, that they gave?
The total that I had, yeah, that I had regrouped on was ninety-nine thousand.
Well, in, in my opinion, 'cause I spent a lot of time over there. So, I, I know, I mean, the, the priorities for me that I see and what I hear from the leagues, uh, is they definitely need additional storage. There's, there's not a whole lot of place for them to put their equipment, the lining equipment, paint. I mean, we're sticking paint in, in one of the back rooms today. Um, the, the bathrooms need, need some attention. There's no ventilation in there, the, there needs to, ought to be automatic flushing, so you don't get smell. As far as remodeling the, the concession stands, to me, I, unless there's, you know, maybe a couple smaller items, I don't think a remodel is necessary, maybe fixing the vent or the, uh, the table out front. So I would be willing to cut that off the list, cause the, actually, to be honest with you, they at least don't use the concession stand quite as much as they used to. And then the parking lot, if that waits, I mean, that could literally wait another year or two if we wanted to. But there are some items that I do think needs to be addressed, cause I don't know how much money we've even sunk into soccer, other than the lights, over the last, well, ever since CSA turned them over.
And, and actually, that wasn't included in my, in my numbers. I might've given you a copy of this, but what I had done originally, it was, it included replace kitchen equipment and, uh, re- replace power panel on sport lighting poles. And I substituted the kitchen equipment because I don't think we're fully utilizing that. I substituted that for the additional building, so you'd have a storage space, that was twenty thousand. And I, um, sup- I replaced the power panel and sport lighting poles, um, with the bin facility around the dumpsters because, because now we've increased the dumpster capacity over there to two.
Yeah.
Um, so it's looking pretty hideous out there.
And, and Tony did send, uh, Mark, Mark sent that, uh, email over to Tony. I think there's like,
Oh, thank you.
A pair of soccer goals that need to be replaced and double benches and, and some other items, um, that aren't included in here, but.
And it was, it was a March twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen document, document that was compiled. And I just kind of revitalized some old issues.
Okay, thank you. We're, we're not doing the breakdown now anyway, so, as Stephen said.
Um, yeah, that's right. We can leave this in the budget, uh, for now, but before any, uh, final decisions are made on how this money's gonna be spent, this is gonna be coming back to us for our, our final decision. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
All right. Let's go down to the swimming pool. Twenty thousand pool rehab, uh, splash zone and the pool furniture. Doug, you wanna start off and tell us what you think about this?
I mean, I'm just glad we're not putting playground equipment back up there. Uh, which, so when that playground equipment, we've been trying to fix for a couple of years, it'd get wet. I've seen kids pour water on it, which is, having a playground next to the pool is not a good idea unless you've got a fence and a designated area. I think a splash, you know, re- repurposing that area for something that's gonna be practical, it adds value to the pool, um, is something I'm in favor of. I don't know, I don't know how much a splash zone is, but I like that it's a creative thought. Um, it, it is something different and whether you live in the Greens or Stony Brook or, you know, any community, there's not an existing splash zone for kids, so it is something that would add value across the board.
Do we have to do it right now when we've got big pool, uh, improvements in those restrooms are in terrible, terrible shape? Uh, I was over there yesterday, the Holly was showing me that the new pool furniture, which we bought two or three years ago, is starting to, uh, waste away. Uh, I,
Well, you, you just have to prioritize it. I mean, I don't see, um, bathroom innovation on this list, but if, if it's in bad shape and it takes a higher priority, then, I mean, you, I don't think we need to go above and beyond a hundred thousand, uh, investment in the pool when you look at the volume. I mean, I, I don't know what our volume is at the pool, but I, I don't imagine it's that high.
And just for you to take into consideration in your conversation, and Tony, you can, you can, um, weigh in on this, but I think by adding the, the splash zone, the wet zone area to the pool facility, I think that might qualify for our impact fees because we would be expanding our, our, um,
If attributable to new development or growth, it might be a possibility for Lee County.
Yeah, so we do have, yeah, so I think that would, would probably easily qualify to use those impact fees that we have sitting there. Not so much on the rest, on the, on the, you know, repair and maintenance, but for that particular pool facility.
Yeah, you could, no. Yeah.
Yeah, for the splash zone.
Yeah, if they don't, if they don't consider a replacement for the current playground, but a brand-new facility to account for impacts.
Right.
The playground equipment is gone and was never there and there's no, 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 no chances it's gonna be a replacement.
Are there, are there communities of our size that have these types of, um, splash pool playgrounds?
It's a wet area.
Uh, the only one that I've ever seen, I don't have children, um, so the only one that I've ever seen is at Lakes Park. Um, so we just have the county as somebody that we could go, go to and discuss that, um, as far as cost. I think a hundred thousand dollars is probably on the low side, uh, relative to the.
It probably is. And, but, and my other, um, consideration is when you bring something like this into the community, which we already had discussions about, that's very exciting for the kids. It's also very exciting for a whole lot of other people that don't exactly live in Gateway, but somewhere around. You know, how, how does that get monitored?
Not to cut you off, Pam, but the bigger issue is that pool's outdated, period. And I would much rather look at a, look at a plan that may be, you know, updating up some of the full facility there.
Well, I think that's what Bill, I think that's what Bill was, was alluding to, that maybe.
I would much rather look at a total, maybe, um, revitalization plan for the pool. And, you know, but again, that's gonna be more than a hundred thousand dollars.
Can, can we, can we agree to leave the numbers with the understanding that we're not gonna start on a splash zone until we have some of these other items, uh, under control and thoughts through completely?
I'm fine with that.
Hmm? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Gary?
You're frowning. I don't see spending it next year, but that's me. I just pulled that one.
Well, if it's impact fees, it could be different.
And let somebody else figure out the following year. I mean, we've got, we've got some substantial things in sixteen, seventeen that, that, including the building renovation and all that, I think that that hundred thousand could be pushed over to seventeen, fiscal seventeen, eighteen.
I'd rather put it in this building.
I think he might be right. I, I think what, I think he's spot on, because we're going to have so much going on. We're going to be starting the lake bank erosion. We do not, in this budget, we have not incorporated any additional staffing. It's just the current staff levels and we're gonna have a lot going on.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Gary suggested that we move the hundred thousand into the seventeen, eighteen fiscal year. I'm, I'm.
I wouldn't do the whole amount.
Well, you wouldn't? Okay. Give me a, give me a number of the.
Well, cause you mentioned bathrooms, what do you think bathrooms and?
No, 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 you, Doug, you keep squishing them together. The pool rehab and improvement stuff, that was supposed to be part of the bathroom.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah.
Twenty thousand?
Yeah.
Twenty and fifty-six, yeah, in the current year.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize it.
Yeah, cause there's money in the current fiscal year for it as well.
On the pool yet?
I bet we haven't.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Twelve thousand, this year, the fifty-six.
Fifty-six thousand.
Have we spent?
No, we haven't spent it all, so there's still money to be spent this year as well.
Absolutely.
I'm still trying to catch up on what's available to us this year and what we should be working, working on.
So the equipment, the area where the equipment is being housed, there's not been any work done on that area either?
What equipment? Oh, the, the equipment house? No, no, there's, there's a lot of things that need pretty immediate attention over there.
I know that's been an issue, equipment.
Yeah.
So wouldn't it be better to have, we haven't spent any of the fifty-six thousand?
Let me give you a number, cause I, we have spent some of it. There we go. Uh, fifteen thousand, eight hundred with another, basically about twenty thousand has been committed of the, of the fifty-six.
So wouldn't it be better to have maybe fifty thousand in the sixteen, seventeen budget for pool and rehab improvements? And nothing for the splash zone for right now?
It can't, if it's there, it's there, Pam, so just, look at your total. You've got fifty-six.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Okay, what, what, what are your thoughts, board members, about moving all or part of this hundred into the, into this eighteen year?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to moving it out.
Gary's suggesting, so I presume you're still feeling that way?
Absolutely.
Pam, you okay? Margaret, you okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move fifty thousand of that from the seventeen fiscal year to the eighteen fiscal year.
And, uh, so the,
And then what?
Seventeen would still be seventy thousand, between those two lines?
Say again, the what?
For.
Splash zone.
You would still, will you be zeroing out the splash zone for next year?
I thought that's what you said, you.
No, 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 I want the hundred just slid.
Yeah, move the whole hundred thousand over.
Just slide the hundred one column over.
Okay. I misunderstood.
No problem.
Let's move the whole hundred to fiscal year eighteen then, Steve?
Okay.
All right, let's go down to, where are we? Landscape services, uh, forty-five hundred for irrigation replacement and thirty for irrigation replacement upgrade, relocation. If, you want any conversation about that or do we just wanna keep, go on?
Yeah, that's your refurbishing of your irrigation.
Ten thousand for aerators, okay. We've all made,
Is that enough?
Say again?
Is that enough?
Is that enough?
For the,
Not for aerators.
For the aerators, no. That's, that's not enough. The idea is that, uh, there's gonna be a plan, um, or a study done on the air, on the aerators.
Right.
So we didn't put a whole bunch of money in there until we saw a study to back it up.
Having said that, I think we need to double that.
We've already got aerators that need to be refurbished in some of the lakes, so.
No, for the aerators, I think we need them.
So what we've done is, within the general fund, we've got repair and maintenance money for irrigation, and then this would be for just new.
New, okay.
New, yeah. None of this, this is all would just be for new.
How, how, how long does a study usually take?
Phil?
Or something like that, was that?
Do you have a ballpark idea on the cost of an aerator?
Is that part of what you're working on? Six months?
Six months? If the study takes six months.
Yeah. The way we move on some things, ten thousand, plenty for this, this year.
On the aerators, the aerators are something that, they are cheap, but they're essential.
But he, but, Gary, he just said that most of this is for a study to find out where and when they're gonna put them in.
No, the,
Did you not?
No. My understanding is the study is a part of, of what we're doing with the lake restoration project. That's the only thing we're getting out of that, is the study. And then, once we know what that study is, we can determine, and right now, we've got ten thousand.
Where the aerators are needed.
Yeah, what's really needed. Um, the problem is, is right now, I could put whatever number in here and I wouldn't know if it's any.
No, but I think that this number is really fictitious and I think that we need to at least double up on that, at least.
Double our fictitious.
Sure, I mean, in Stony Brook alone, I think we're gonna, you know?
Should we put it in for, for, should we double it for this year or add something in for sixteen, seventeen?
This year is really next year, kiddo.
We're talking about seventeen, the ten thousand.
Okay, so we're talking next year. So I'm saying, yeah, I, my suggestion is to double up.
I agree, your aerators are, you're not gonna get much for ten thousand bucks on your aerators. When you're talking about the elec- the electric.
No, and I'm holding back, I, I wanna triple it, really.
Maybe put fifty?
I wanna put thirty is the number that's in my mind, but you guys can, whatever.
I, I'm shooting in the dark, so I would much rather have it, you know, something earmarked if we think it's.
Danny, can you give us some direction here?
Well, if, if we're, if you're actually looking to truly do aeration, you're looking at about two and a half million dollars for the aeration and then probably another five hundred thousand for soft costs. I think, I, I thought the, the plan or direction I would give is you're gonna, you're gonna analyze it this year and you can then come back and properly budget for it next year. You've gotta go through, you gotta have funding, you don't have funding in place for it.
Okay.
So you can go through the facilities planning process if you wanna do the SRF route again, so.
All right, then back to the, how long does the study take so we can go for the SRF?
Well, yeah, and, and Pam had asked that question. I would say, you know, six months I would budget. And the reason is that you've gotta go and do, um, the bathymetrics and, and, so it's not just a matter of you can go out there today and kumbaya, everything's done, so.
That was what you presented last, maybe one, all the soft costs that, yeah.
Stephen?
Okay, what are we gonna, what are we gonna put in for aerators for fiscal seventeen? Thirty?
Let me ask a question before we, we're, I, it's, cause you said that aerators is in the O-O-One budget, but I've got ten thousand for twenty sixteen and nothing for twenty seventeen on that line.
That's correct, cause that's, it's being moved into the capital, uh, projects budget, that, that line.
But what about the aerators that we already have that need repair and replacement?
If you look at page, um, we didn't even talk about this, page one sixteen. We actually have fifty thousand dollars that was put into next year's budget under the repairs and maintenance line, and that's for maintenance of, for aerators, washouts and fish barrels, whatever that is.
Fish barrels.
Barriers, okay, that, that makes more sense. So there's fifty thousand and that was, you know, part of the change that we made after our last budget discussion.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, are we gonna change that ten thousand to thirty? Is that where we are?
I'm happy with that.
Okay.
And now, is that thirty thousand across the board? Or we can talk about that?
Actually, the reality is, we don't need to.
We don't need to change that.
We can keep it at, at ten.
Exactly.
To Danny's point, we'll have to,
You've gotta approach that.
And then year, next year after.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we got repair budget for anything, repair anything that new, we'll have to budget this project out.
Yeah, we're good.
Yep. Where do we have to go next, Steve?
Um, if you want to, the next page looks at, uh, the enterprise fund as well in terms of, uh, capital projects. Now, um, some of these, like, you know, example, with the office building, again, it's, it's allocated between the two funds, so, really, anything in the, um, administrative services there is an allocation of, kind of what we talked about. Uh, the next one really is, uh, we put in G.I.S.
Danny, what are we doing with that?
Um, I mean, you're, you're close to the finish line, so I wouldn't remove that item.
No, 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 I don't wanna remove it, I just wanted to know what we're doing.
We're in the,
We should be about finished, right?
Yeah, we're in the, the hardest part, and the reason why it's the hardest is it's, it's getting. Yeah, we're in the, the hardest part, and the reason why it's the hardest is it's, it's getting, it's the more difficult information into the system, the stuff that is, um, tangible physically, but it's not electronic, so it's converting the information over to electronic and then getting it in there, so.
Yeah, but we still have another contract that we have to, we still have another contract ultimately that we're going to have to bring back to the board for approval. Remember how this time we approved phase four?
Yep.
And there's gonna be a phase five.
So does that twenty thousand cover that?
Yes, that's in the, yes, you've already approved the two thousand and sixteen and just estimating based on what we've done in the previous year. We still need to get the utilities and the plat easements in the system.
Can we go ahead then, down to the irrigation replacement specs with the bid pack? Ten, five, tell me what that is.
And that's, that's an allocation as well between the, the general fund. The, the general fund had, um, about thirty-five thousand in, for their share. This is the balance.
Yeah, we, I don't know anything about this irrigation piece, but I know we've talked about the, the irrigation period being very dated and at some point we're, we're gonna have to assess it. Um, at what point are we, and how, how do you assess an irrigation system? No idea. Come on, if you're, you're one here.
It's called take it apart piece by piece and, uh, not being facetious.
Oh, if, if-
Start with the oldest and work.
If I may, we have met with Mainscape and, um, we're currently dusting off some old proposals. And, um, we've talked about the, the pressure issues that we're having, we've talked, we've talked about. We have twelve satellite zones, um, that don't communicate back to the home base computer. Um, so we've been band-aiding the system with battery-operated, um, uh, control modules. And there, there is one way to, um, implement a new system is to go to a two-wire system which could get us down to four zones. And that would give us the ability to manage the system and actually know, actually have information coming back, um, for us to evaluate. And so, we've been, we, we're working on routine monthly, um, meetings with Mainscape to talk about the irrigation system and landscaping issues. And, uh, I spoke to Tyler today and we're gonna have to get the engineers involved. And we would like to do, perform some sort of comprehensive evaluation. I don't know exactly how, how we do that, but everybody at the table was in agreement that it needs to be an independent evaluation. It doesn't necessarily need to be directed from Mainscape, you know, because, um, they've got some ideas on current technology and so there's a lot to research, it's a, it's a huge investment. And so that's kind of what this number encompasses, is an overall comprehensive plan of the system, because what I'm afraid of is we've, um, we've made the investment in the master plan, uh, for the landscaping and we may not have, you know, the best irrigation system to support that. Uh, so we're, I'm trying to bring everything back to the table, get all, all the parties involved and have a very open discussion to figure out what our long-term and short-term plans are. And one of the things that we did discuss is that it is probably time for us to implement our own regulations.
Makes sense.
And a new system would help us provide, you know, get that feedback, um, to manage the water usage as well.
Okay.
Having heard all that, we're gonna leave the ten thousand five hundred in for the bid pack, seventy thousand for the irrigation replacement upgrade, re- relocation? Yes, 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 yes.
What is it?
Uh, that's irrigation replacement, upgrade, relocation.
Where we were relocating it to your backyard, what?
Now, there's an idea for it.
What, April, what is it?
Um, the relocation might have just, just been, um, relative to what we wanna do over, over at the, uh, complex and re- relocate the zones, because we're kinda switching, we would, the idea is to switch from a twelve-zone area to more like a four-zone with new technology. So I think it was probably just a general, general relocation word.
To what facility?
What's that?
To what, you meant, you just said relocating it to a facility, what facility?
The, the individual satellite, satellites facilities, like there's a big one over there at the Sherman complex where all of the information comes into, it's like a hub. I don't know the exact technical, technology words.
Steven, you got any idea?
No, I just was going back through the, um, my notes, I don't have any additional in terms of what the little relocation.
Not a buil, not a building.
Not a clue.
No, it's not a building.
So I guess we'll know when it comes up.
There you go. Before it fails.
Are there individual companies that do, that just specialize in irrigation? And that we should possibly be speaking to, to see if we could get a competitive bid on stuff like this of this magnitude? Especially with the geriatric things that we're gonna start opening up?
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's the plan.
What's the plan?
To have an independent, comprehensive evaluation of our system.
By an irrigation specialist, not Mainscape.
When will we do that?
April's working on it.
It's in the stack on her desk.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, can we move ahead?
Yes.
Yes.
Upgrade or, the permanent, insulation of permanent generators at the pump stations. I remember reading that and thinking that was a good idea, and then I get the wastewater pump station replacement, two per year. Uh, for some reason or other, I can't, I can't separate those two in my mind. Those two sixties, can you help me please?
Well, the, the, the pump stations are what we've been, we actually had to increase the budget this year to get extra, uh, pumps. I think, I, the generators, I think, are just permanent generators that run the, the pump stations without being, yeah.
Electrical power, the fact that people like their sewage to go someplace or?
Once the generator go out.
Yeah, so that, yeah.
Did it about four times this morning.
This is, so they don't get to run around with portable generators.
Well, yeah, you, you have portable generators now, I think that concept is to, uh, to put in, um, at least at, permanent generators at your, your master, your largest station, so, um, that way, you do have that outage, um, then your system continues to work.
It's a little complicated.
That sounds like a no-brainer to me. How about the wastewater pump station replacement, two per year?
Those are the pumps themselves.
Hmm?
Those are the pumps themselves.
Remember the staff wanted to have pumps in supply so that in the event something went out that they weren't scrambling to try to have, they had to have a variety of pumps.
I believe this is the, the, the re, the ongoing rehabilitation that you, that you do, so I wouldn't recommend changing that.
No, 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 no.
Okay, let's get down, let's get down to the pump station telemetry. That April talked about that a few minutes ago. Let's go on down to rehabilitation of the irrigation groundwater wells.
I have a question, the meter replacement project, are we gonna incur any additional costs for that?
Uh, y- y- yes, and, um, and that was the item that was under, uh, foreseen under the consent. Part of the amendment that was approved and the chairman will sign today, um, the, the amendment has it so that the, um, the installation is being removed from the contract. So Gateway will now engage a vendor to do the installation, so we've actually been talking to US Water. And what we are arranging to do is have US Water actually physically come and look at the remaining a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fifteen, um, actual meters, so they can give us an accurate price of what it will take on each one to do, to do the work. So we don't know, we're guessing in that range of ten to fifteen thousand dollars, uh, what it will cost extra.
We wouldn't get, is that credit back?
You'll get, you won't pay for what has not been installed, so you'll get that, that credit. And then, and in addition to that, um, that part of the amendment is that the, uh, the vendor, Fortline, will be, uh, performing an audit, a full audit.
But we've got the money somewhere budgeted or will?
Well, I mean, they're, they're, you know, we're talking, uh, ten, fifteen thousand dollars, we don't know where at, that will be extra, that will have to come from, you know, from somewhere.
Okay, so we're just not putting it in here right now?
And that will be in this, that will, that should be in this fiscal year, so, yeah.
Got it. Maybe we go down to the rehabilitation irrigation groundwater wells. I keep reading these words, but I'm not sure that I understand exactly what we're doing. These, Danny told us, I thought, that the wells are in great shape, but we need to work on the pumps and-
Yeah, I think, and I can't tell you exactly, I mean, it, being that it's recurring every year the same amount, I think it's just, there's, there's ongoing maintenance that you've periodically gotta do, so if a well goes out, you're, you pretty much have to, uh, replace it. So I think it's just that recurring cost and I think that's historically been in, in the range that it, that it's been.
Lift station, that's a emergency bypass pump. Help me on that, would you, Steve?
Four. Where'd Danny go?
Steve wants, Steve wants to bypass it for Danny.
This one is, I can read what we have on here, purchase a trailer-mounted vacuum-assisted bypass pump for emergency response and small dewatering projects.
Okay, so I, I can help with that.
I can translate.
It's a, it's, yeah, it's, it's a standby pump that, um-
In a trailer, that we pull.
Right, and, uh, where, where do you have it, your lift stations, uh, your, your wastewater pumping stations, they're equipped with a, a bypass pump-out connection. So in addition to the ability to have portable generators, or in this case with permanent generators, um, it just gives you another mechanism to make sure your system stays up and running. And I think you can also use it for, uh, for dewatering or other things, like a trash pump to, uh, to help if you need it in a stormwater situation even.
Is it pretty standard for?
Uh, yes, yes, I'm surprised you don't have one.
Danny, where are we at with the filters? Remember the filters were a big, big item with the lift stations and the odors and?
I, I don't know that you have any, uh, additional, um, odor issues, I think the ones that had been, um-
So our contracts are still intact?
Yes, so I don't think you have any issues or any additional costs there that-
Where are those contracts shown anywhere in?
Well, they wouldn't be under the, they wouldn't be under the capital.
They should be in the O-O-four, was, do we have that, Steven, just, just, just recall?
From?
We have these big contracts for filters.
Oh, we, there, I mean, I don't know if it's in this agenda, but the contract listing that was provided-
Okay, no problem.
Would cover that.
Filters for, like, odor control.
Yeah, yeah, it's on there, I've seen it.
Okay.
Is there a particular question about them that I can, that I can forward to you once I find out? Or are we, we just wanting to know who it is?
I think it's, see?
I thought it was Siemens?
Yeah, so you say it's Siemens, I believe.
That's, yeah.
Steve, are you ready for the board to adopt the resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh nine?
Uh, assuming there are no further questions, then yes to, basically, the, the, uh, motion would be to accept the assessment levels for all the funds, with the exception of the general fund, which we would level off at last year. And then everything else in terms of the totals will change, we will certainly make some of the, uh, smaller adjustments that we talked about. But again, the key is, uh, to, uh, adopt your, your top level, uh, max number and then, and then the budget hearing, which is August eighteenth.
Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this budget, uh, resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh nine, may I have a mo-
So move.
May I have a motion and a second? Kathleen, did you have something? Please, uh, come forward, I told you that you could talk about this while we were doing on the budget, I'm glad you waved your hand, cause I was ready to move on.
Hi, Kathy Flaherty, one-two-five-six-six, Ivory Stone Loop. Um, on page one oh seven in the agenda, you have the lake, uh, bank restoration fund, which, that's fine. However, I know that there's a special assessment and I wanna know on page one eighteen if that special assessment is the sixty-two dollars and fifty-five cents? Or is just, that just a general increase and that's not the special assessment?
There's, I don't think there's a connection there.
You don't?
What, what, what page were you at, one eighteen?
I'm on, well, yes, on one oh seven though, we have the restoration fund, that's the-
The new grant.
Right, okay, and I know that you're having a special assessment. Now, on page one eighteen is the assessment summary, is that sixty-two dollars and fifty-five cents the increase, that's special assessment fee?
Yeah, it is pretty close, this was the net, the actual increase just for the lake is sixty-six dollars and forty-four cents.
So, so then my question is, it's gonna go up sixty-two dollars plus sixty-six dollars?
No, no, it's gonna go up, now it's gonna go up, um, sixty-six dollars plus a little bit of change from what we just did to level off the general fund. But not much more than that.
And that's assuming the board adopts the budget as-
Assuming, yes.
As the chairman indicated before, this is the high-water mark.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not finished.
Okay, um, not that I don't care that the staff gets an increase, but in the budget, there's a three percent increase. Last year, there was a three percent increase and it was cost, the cost of living increased. There was zero cost of living increase last year, okay? And I know that this young, this young lady here has said that at the other meeting, um, because I know social security didn't get an increase. So I'm wondering where this, where you're coming up with this three percent increase.
Uh, three percent is a, just a top-level number that we normally put in to start the process, just like everything else, it's, it's not until the, the board accepts that number and adopts the budget is it official. It's just to give you some money in there, and then later on, as the process goes on, I think last year we started at three percent and as we went on, it went down, depending upon what we were trying to cut.
And we're gonna try and get the sumerit, uh, this year if possible.
And, and basically what I did is I put it into buckets and then the board and staff can split that out how they want.
We'll spread it as we see fit later on.
Got one more question, okay? In your budget hearing you have for three o'clock on August eighteenth, okay? Is there any reason that you can't change that time so that therefore people that do work can get here for it? Just a question, thank you.
For, for our standard meeting or just for the budget?
Just for the budget hearing, instead of having it at three, maybe having it at five-thirty so that those people who work could get to the budget hearing.
No, no, I'm sorry, I wasn't answering your question. Steven, appreciate your answer, Paul.
No, no, the, the, the cities can't have, they have to have their budget after five oh one. But yeah, I mean, a- again, I don't know what's the agenda's gonna look like, you can certainly-
You can set it for any time you want, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. How about we, how about we set it at five? Well, I haven't, don't remember that we've had less than a two-hour meeting, uh, in quite a while. We'll start at three o'clock and we'll, uh, interrupt if we have to and have the budget hearing at, at five. Any, any opposition? That's what we'll do. Alright, we have a motion and a second to adopt the high-water budget for the fiscal year seventeen.
With a change of time to five P.M.
With the changes fine to five P.M., thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Five zero, thank you very much. Okay, five D, employment agreement for Ms. White. I'm sure you all have read the multi-page agreements that, uh, the chairman and Ms. White have worked out. And, uh, I suspect that there's going to be some conversations and so, floor is open to board members who want to start any.
I'll be the last.
Alright.
No, I want to be the last.
Margaret, you want to start?
I will, I'll, I'll ask the question, cause I thought that we had, um, extended her contract ninety days to give ourselves time to decide what we wanted our st- to give ourselves time to decide what we wanted our staffing to look like before we came to this decision. This is a three-year contract, so I actually was kinda surprised when I read it, because it seemed like it was a change of direction from what we had decided at, I believe, the last meeting.
Well, there's, there really are two questions or issues there, if I may try and interpret their one. We did, in fact, pass a motion for Severn Trent to continue for an additional ninety days, the employment of Ms. White. At the same time, we talked at this board table about employing Ms. White directly as an employee of the board. And of the four members that were present on that, on that meeting, three said three authorized the chair to go ahead and start working on negotiations with Ms. White. Not knowing whether the negotiations would be successful or not, I began immediately. And the negotiations took several weeks. And I felt that once we had come to an agreement, that there was no sense in postponing it. Having, I have a, I have a statement that I want to read, but first, I want to make sure I have answered your question.
Go ahead, and I'll...
And obviously, I think we gave ourselves ninety days as a buffer, as far as understanding what our needs are organizationally. I think unless the board wants to do some working sessions, and to have a vested interest in trying to figure out what the work structure's gonna be, and get, dig in the woods, uh, in the weeds, the, the solution to truly do that, and I think the right choice would be to have the officer or the general manager come in and evaluate the staff, and do that on our behalf. So I think that's, that's why I would see bringing, making this transition sooner rather than later makes more sense.
What's your better?
Nothing, I'll, I'll wait for you to read to the...
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, during the five and one-half years that I have been on this board, there have been five operations managers. An organization of this size with no overlapping management can ever expect to be effective or efficient when the top management is forever changing like a revolving door. Now we have an opportunity to correct that, and to make this CDD a place we can all be proud of. One that is proactive instead of reactive, one that answers residents' concerns promptly, and one that is not constantly running from fire to fire. April White's been with us for now more than three months, and has shown that she is a fast learner and hard worker. I support this employment contract and the associated amendment to the Severn Trent contract. End of the statement. Doug, you've certainly not finished. Aye. Are you finished? I am finished for now, yes. No, 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 forgive me. Are you finished with all your comments? Doug?
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, if you're, if you go down the line, I'd say I'm in favor of this contract for a couple reasons. One, it makes sense to put this position underneath the board. I think it gives us direct line of sight to the operation area, or the general manager, whatever we're calling it. I think it gives us better positioning for us to hold our management company accountable. Gives us checks and balances. As far as the contract, I think a three-year contract is, is a good amount. I would've probably had it open-ended, and just, you know, come up with the salary and say, we want you to stay as long as, as long as you're there. But I'm okay with the three years. I'm in favor of it, of the terms of eighty-five, ninety, nine, ninety-five, because it does give an incentive for her to, to stay. And also, I would imagine after year one, when I look at the contract, first year would basically be a wash based on what we, what we spend, and what we will be spending year two and three. I would expect that any increase would be offset by process improvements, cost saves. If we would've had April in place and the oversight with the utilities project, we would probably not have to pay TestrTech ten thousand dollars to come in and manage that. So I'm in favor of the, of the salary amount, and in favor of April in that role. And I think if the sooner we can get her on board and have her start evaluating everything from inventory to process to staff, pretty much everything from the top down. And I, I encourage everyone on this board to, to look, especially those that have had tenure, to look at the problems that we've had over the years. And I think we do need an administrator at, at its core, as opposed to, you know, someone that, you know, maybe an operations engineer or something along those lines. We have administratively, we have administrative gaps in this organization. And I think we need to have a true administrator that is, that can motivate the staff, that can manage projects, that understands the financials, H.R. functions, policies, procedures, and I feel like April has that.
And I agree that that position should be an employee of the district. I always thought that it should've been. I voted against it being a part of the management company. So as far as that's concerned, I think that's absolutely necessary that we, that we switch that position that way. I just, I just, I guess I was just a bit surprised that this came up so soon after we had, you know, extended her employment with Severn Trent, that this came up so soon. It just caught me by surprise.
That's why we put it in the advanced agenda.
Because, and I am in favor of that position, being an employee of the district, absolutely. And I'll wait to hear other people have to say.
Well, I am in favor of her being an employee, or that position being an employee of the district. However, I am surprised that we, this has come up for this meeting, in the way it's come up. I think that it would've been nice for all of us to have some participation on how we, who we wanted to put in this position, and how we wanted to give compensation for this position, and how it integrates into the way we're putting the, um, the employment, the people, or with the, I can't think of my, get my wording together.
The organizational.
The organizational chart together. So I would've hoped that we could've put that together and had her, had, had that integrated in. We are hiring, or we just hired, a utilities manager. I would've liked to have had this person come in, and I'm sure they are coming in at some point, to introduce themselves to the board, and had them be a part of the district before we made this decision. That would've gave us at least sixty days to get to know both of these people, and to see how we wanted to have the reporting system to the board. And we still don't have a reporting system of how we're going to, who she's going to report to, where she takes direction. So I think there's some, a lot of things that need to be put together so that this can operate smoothly.
She takes direction from the board.
Well, she does take direction from the board.
She's totally accountable to the board.
I understand that. But on a day-to-day basis, we are not here. So who are you talking to?
She's the head of it.
The chairman will take that responsibility if you so desire.
Well, I don't know. I would think that we would all want to be, want to have some say-so in that. I mean, it's five people on this board. And so what I would like is it to be more transparent, and I think we need to figure out how this person, whoever it is, will be reporting. And I don't know, Tony, can, if she gets out an email, or sends out an email, what she does now. Does that go to all of us?
That could.
And then, you know, who has the final say, and when does it, when does it happen? So I just think that, and, and I'm just throwing this out here. I think that we don't have to make this decision at this meeting. I think this is something that, you know, we should all be able to go over and have some input into how we want to bring this person aboard, and what the salary ranges are, and if this is fair. I'm not against it, but I just think we should have some part in it. I'm finished, thank you.
Here are your last.
Okay, you, Doug mentioned the fact that people have had tenure, et cetera. I guess Margaret and I and Pam are probably the long timers here. And we've gone through, no, 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 you were here before him. We're coming up on eight years, kiddo, five and a half years. So in any, okay, so then Margaret and I are the old guys. Take that for what it's worth. In any case, we've gone through, Bill talks about the different people that have come and gone. We have been through the come and go, and we've been through the good, the bad, and the ugly. We've been through the fact that prior to us, the board had changed over from an employee with ironically Severn Trent, to then the person being a, an employee of the district. We've gone through that employee as an employee, that person as an employee of the district, getting perks and bonuses, and then the discoveries after the fact of how that occurred, and why it occurred. There is no way, first of all, that we as board people should be in this building constantly and interacting as a part of it. That's dead wrong. While I segue, Bill, you just mentioned, maybe you misspoke, but you said that you've been talking, and I'm quoting you, that you've been talking to April for several weeks regarding this. This is what Pam, and I'm speaking for Pam. In my strong opinion, that's something where you stepped over your bounds to start getting involved personally with that type of thing. As Pam said, there's five of us here, and every one of the five of us has an equal vote, in spite of title. For you to be doing that type of thing steps way over the bounds.
I disagree with you entirely. This board voted three to one with your opposition giving me the authority to do that.
Bill, three meetings ago, we put up with you barking, and we already lost one supervisor over that. So don't, don't try it with me.
Well, don't then be accurate with your facts.
I listened to you. You've made your statement, no one interrupted you. Have the simple courtesy of not interrupting me. I think I made that quite clear. As far as April's qualifications are concerned, we've got a guy right now that has qualifications that are quite, quite substantial, directly in line with handling, managing this type of staff, which is our primary business, the enterprise fund. We lost Melissa, her thing was that she was in accounting. It's still debatable as to whether we needed a person of that position, and/or that we were paying what the going rate really was supposed to be. We haven't done, Doug at the last meeting gave us this, his first meeting on board. Don't take this the wrong way, but first meeting on board.
Second meeting. Third meeting, actually.
Today? A little bit new. We've been through the people and all of the things that have occurred. We've been through the reasons why some people have left. We've been through the reasons why hard drives were missing from computers, et cetera. Which I know that may be gut-wrenching to some people, but it still is something that says an awful lot about something. We're racing into something here that we don't even have the organization created. And again, I repeat, there isn't a one of us here that has nor should have the kind of experience that actually does or has lived the day-to-day type of thing. We have business experience or governmental experience. Some of us have created managerial programs, some of us have created managerial teams. But none of us, none of us, has done the real granite work that this district does. That person that came in here, and we could've had for nine hundred dollars, who actually does...
Who are you talking about?
Joe DeCervo. Joe DeCervo is an instructor at the Florida Association.
Does he live in Gateway? Does he live in Four Vines? No, he's not local?
No.
Is he gonna move here?
So in other words, if somebody lives in Gateway, that makes them qualified?
I just don't know, I know who Joe, Joe DeCervo is, but I didn't know if he lives, or if he's even, if he's even available to sit in his office on a day-to-day.
In your proposal, you put his name in here.
Yeah, I know. I'm just asking where, where he was located.
You acted in your proposal.
I'm not arguing with you, Gary.
All right.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get clarity. Just calm down.
Okay, so here's a guy that was here and did get involved here, and is an instructor at the Florida Association of Special Districts, runs a staff like this. And we just, for some reason, don't want him to actually come here and complete the job, which the price is a bargain. We've just gone through how many hundreds of thousands of dollars in a budget, yet we don't want that. Bottom line to this is, is this gentleman that is either hired or the potential for hire, seems to me, from looking at his resume, that he's got a lot more qualifications for that position. And in addition to that, we've got an open position of Melissa, that April's background is predominantly CPA. And if you then argue with me that it's not CPA, then why did you put in here that we're supposed to also, and the people that are part of this district are supposed to pay to keep her CPA intact and make all these contributions? Why don't we each then have that same contribution for my real estate license, et cetera, and my capabilities of knowing that type of thing? That's just, you've gone way over the edge. This is something that's happening way too quick, it's being rammed down our throat for somebody's reason. We need to evaluate this person, and maybe in ninety days, when we see the difference between the two, maybe I'll agree, and maybe I won't. But to make that offer and to sign that three-year thing with all of those things that are intact, and with the bonuses, which again, we had that situation before, and it was catastrophe. It's a huge mistake.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Any other comments from board members? April?
Um, can I provide something to you? I've been wanting to vet it for a while. It's the evaluation form that we've come up with, and I filled one out for myself, of course, it's a draft. And I think it, I have on here a couple of things that may clarify what Mr. Minigar was just speaking of, as far as my CPA certification. CPA is kind of a, a broad certification. A lot of people hold it, but that do not necessarily go into public tax accounting. This is, what I intended to do is create a document, a, a form for us to evaluate myself and the employees. This is part of what our merit pay would be structured on. It includes a, a growth development plan. It's, it's not just, you can't just go through and make marks for everybody to be high score. So it actually is, what I'm anticipating is that this, we would develop this process, and we would monitor it quarterly. Everybody would be held to the same standard. This is a format that the city of Cape Coral used, and during my time there, I thought it was a very useful tool. So one of the things that I had put... So one of the things that I had put on here for, and of course, if I was employed by the board, this would be up to the board to help prioritize what I, what my strategic goals would be. But one of the things that I had on here was to develop and implement an evaluation process that promotes professional development, accountability, and organizational growth. Also to develop the, and implement the Vision 2020 Plan. I understand that it's not something that was adopted per se, but it was something introduced and I think it's a healthy plan for us to gain some momentum and some direction because we seem to be stumbling with that. And also to develop a human resource management plan to include staffing, succession planning, compensation and benefits, and defining and assigning work. And then the next section goes into the operational department goals that, and those are just three specific things that I would do to help meet the strategic goals of the organization. But in the personal and professional improvement goals on page three, I had some specific courses that I would like to take. Of course, the CDM is a FASB, is a FASD certification and so I have to take FASD courses at their conference. But I went out there and I looked at the conference from last year and there was water district roundtables, there was responsibilities of the district attorney, strategic planning, social media is difficult, and sunshine laws. So there are things that I can take to promote growth and professional development that would directly benefit the district. And some of my CPA certifications, not only do I have to take financial analysis and not only do I have to take classes that are going to help me do tax because I've never done tax in my life, but I did pursue my CPA because the CPA is, you know, other than your masters, it's the top of what accountants do. You achieve your CPA. And not only is it, it's not something that I plan on exercising to do tax, but it is something that I wanted to finish and accomplish and it was very hard to achieve. But some of those classes out there that I can take are ethics, financial statement analysis. We do have financial statements, project management, using Excel for business analysis. That would really help in the billing side because we have a tremendous amount of data analysis that we do here. Key performance indicators, employment law for managers. So there is a broad spectrum of education for me to gain under that CPA certification for me to develop my professional growth here for the district.
So are you currently a CPA and this is continuing education to maintain that?
Yes.
And are these classes that are available online or how do you plan on taking me?
A lot are online and I prefer online because I do not like to travel.
Do you have any other questions?
And those types of courses, you know, are easier for me to take here and be here on the worksite. You know, I mean, I would imagine that some of them would be a little bit more intense. But, you know, so I wouldn't necessarily have to be absent.
Thank you, April. The chair would like to entertain a motion to approve the contract between the Gateway Service Community Development District and April White, as stated in your agenda. May I have a motion? I'm sorry?
I, I'm not completely against this, but in, I have to agree. It seems like we're rushing into this and I'm not sure exactly why. Is there a reason why we can't wait to do this?
What do we need? Or you want to look at more candidates or you're not happy with the contract?
I don't, I'm not necessarily that we need to look at more candidates. I'm not disappointed in April. I think she's, you know, rolled her sleeves up and done a very good job. I just am concerned that we're putting the cart before the horse because we don't have our management plan in place. And we're bringing in another employee and I'm not really sure what the hierarchy here is going to be. Are they going to be equal roles or is he going to be answering to April? We don't even have, we don't even have the employee structure in place. So we're creating this general manager position and I don't know, I'm not comfortable with where this fits into where we're going. Not that I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable with April, I'm just uncomfortable with the fact we don't have the total structure.
So is the structure of the contract, is the general manager in the house? Is that correct?
The general manager is the top rated-
Subordinates report in, that's utilities manager, facilities manager, whatever the next level of management is. Is that the way the contract reads? That's the way I read it.
That's correct.
And then I, to me, it would be, given the org structure, it's hard for us to do that as a board. We can come up with recommendations. I mean, Severn Trent's come up with a recommendation. I think even Joe Di Servo came up with some recommendations. So I think we have a structure in place. I think where I see the issue, when I first came on board, I felt like we needed that ops manager to do an evaluation and to help us build out what the org structure. I think it has to be done from the inside. I mean, even Cal and Severn Trent and Joe, I mean, you can sit in a chair for a week and evaluate the staff. But I think unless you're sitting in that chair and you're understanding the day-to-day, I think it would be difficult to come up with that organizational structure if you're not entrenched in the, you know. I'm just trying to understand what, you know, we need to wait. If there's valid reasons for us to push this out another two weeks or four weeks or whatever, then I'd just like to know what that is so we can focus on addressing it.
I think it's valid reasons to push it out and I agree. I don't have a problem with April, but I, this has been thrown on us. I don't know why we have to do, make this decision today. I would like to keep it at the same time limit that we had.
Say again, the same one?
I'd like to keep it at, I think it was September we were supposed to make this decision. We have, as I say again, we have a new person coming on. I'd like to be able to evaluate that person and see how they fit into the operational structure. They may be able to add something on. You can never have too much professionalism. And indeed, we do, we do have to make that decision on how we structure this thing and how it's going to be managed. I'd like to know where the Severn Trent come into this. So there's, I think there are a lot of questions that need to be answered as to if we hire someone, what is Severn Trent's position? What, what does April or whoever this person may be, what is their position? We still need some balances here, some checks and balances. I don't want someone to have full reign over the district and then we find out that the, you know, the fox is left with the hen house or left with the hens or whatever. So I think we need to have more, more checks and balances.
A bunny is cute.
Whatever, a bunny. But I'd like to have, April, there's, you know, I understand what you can do. I mean, I, I've interviewed you. I, I don't have a problem with your skill set. But my problem today is I don't want to make this decision today. I'd like to have more input into how we structure this situation. And I think that it's April's job today to help us to put together a structure that shows where this person's going to be and what they're, what they're going to be able to do for, for the district and how, how they're going to be accountable. So that's, that's very important is the accountability at the end of the day.
And I, I understand your concerns and I agree. And let me explain what my experience is with a position that reports directly to the board. My experience is, is that all my evaluations would be done in the sunshine, that the evaluation forms would come to each of the board members and you would have the ability to evaluate me. And the contract has allowed for merit, but it doesn't have to be provided. But there is a scale of increase. However, when it comes to accountability and transparency, I'm a very strong believer of that. And I think what the intention was is to get me on board so we can start developing those things. Checks and balances, you know, as far as, I can, I can either report time off and things of that nature with Cal or you could, you know, designate the chairman as to handle those things. You could swap off and say this quarter, you know, one of, one of the supervisors is in charge of me. So every quarter, you know, everybody gets an opportunity to work more closely with me to perform that evaluation. But those are things that I think what was in my mind and maybe Mr. Guy's mind is that if we got this formality out of the way, we peeled back a lot of, we peeled back out of the contract, the job description, the very, you know, specific things because we're currently developing the organization. And I, I, I'm in agreement with Mr. Banks is that what we really need to formulate and design our organization are some really comprehensive workshops where we all get buy-in, where we all talk about these things and figure out, you know, the nuts and the bolts of how we're going to operate. What are those checks and balances? Who's going to be approving, proving whose purchase orders? And I am completely open to that and there's nothing in this contract that restricts that.
That's true, but what I would like to do is to do some of that beforehand. You understand what I'm saying? I would like to have some of those things done before someone, we bring someone aboard.
Okay, so checks, so you want some checks and balances?
How we intend to do checks and balances.
As far as monitoring my position?
Right, as far as monitoring your position. I don't know if I'm in agreement with having a contract. So, you know, the thing is, I, you know, why would you not be an employee? Why would you, why would we have a contract?
So there's a couple of things that Mr. Guy and I discussed. The biggest issue for anybody in my position, reporting to a board, is, is it really about control? If the board wants the control of the position, there's five of you. So somebody in my position, the first thing that you're going to think about is, well, who gets to fire me? So is it one of you? Is it all of you? Is it three of you? Is it four of you? How, because you only operate as a board, you know, together. So that creates the first, the first, you know, hurdle of what you have to deal with. The board, from the board's perspective, I think you're looking for consistency. You want somebody to stay, stay long enough to make change. Stay long enough to change the culture in the organization, understand the needs of the staff. What's our vision? Where are we going? What do we want to look like? How do we operate? We don't have those things as an organization.
So are you saying you cannot do that as an employee? You could, you would only be able to operate as, under a contract?
No, no, but I think from the board's perspective, you were wanting that long-term commitment. You, you were wanting something more than, so without a contract, and I'm happy to be a general employee. I, we, we can definitely entertain that.
Because a contract doesn't mean that you're going to be here for three years. It's just a contract. It doesn't mean that you're going to actually be here for-
Or five years.
Or five years. I mean, you can, employment is at will. You know, so I don't understand why a contract has to be put in place.
Well, Tony, do you want to, with the contract, because I've made an obligation in there to provide a ninety-day notice and that they can terminate me, is that necessarily at will?
No, as drafted, the general concept in Florida is absent. Contract to the contrary, a contract can be in the form of terms and provisions of an employee manual, even though you have an oral arrangement. This contract is not an ad hoc contract. This is a specific employment agreement, but she would be an employee of the district. But the only way the district could terminate is under those conditions in paragraph four. She has the ability to, to terminate, let's see, paragraph four, article, what was it? Article six, excuse me. It, she can resign upon ninety days, but there are, the only way the district can terminate her employment is outlined in four B through E by a vote of four members of the board.
Okay. And so if her contract is a three-year contract and we get to two years and six months and decide that we wanted to terminate her employment, we have to pay her out the-
No.
The six months?
We would have, first of all, there had to be a vote affirmed by four members of the board under the basis outlined in here. And if it's terminated pursuant to those provisions, the form affirmative votes, she would not get any severance.
And the other thing is, I don't see why, if she was just an employee, how would one board member be able to fire her? We still wouldn't, one board member wouldn't have been able to fire her.
That's correct.
So you would, you would still not-
Once again, she would, it would be an employee, the district can do the agreement, whether it is-
Okay, so if she was just a normal employee without a contract, what, can one board member fire her?
In my opinion, no.
No.
You'd have to vote.
You'd have to have a point.
It would be majority.
Correct, simple majority, would not have to be articulatable reason, it's the person's at will.
Well, I don't think it was necessarily about the one board member being able to fire somebody from, from that perspective, because if I was a general employee, I wouldn't report directly to the board. I believe I'd be reporting to Cal. And so I-
No, no, that's not true.
So how would I, how would I report directly?
To the board. That wouldn't change. Once again, the board-
You get your direction from the board.
Correct, the board provides the-
We're responsible to create policy and direction. You would, you would interpret and basically enforce the policies in the day-to-day. I mean, just like any other board would report, or a CEO or a president would report to the board of directors. It's the same.
Well, the top description would be that, it's basically outlined in the agreement.
So, I mean, if there was, I think what maybe Pam's asking is, who is your point of contact? If you need direction or if there is something that, you know, we as a board want you to do, would we channel that through one, you know, channeling through the chairman? Or, because what you don't want to happen is you don't want to get five emails constantly saying, have you done this? Have you done that? I mean, that's, that's not what we would, what I don't think we would want.
I don't have an issue with your wanting a contract. I can completely understand why you would. Let me ask you this. What do you see as your relationship with Severn Trent under this contract?
I believe I'd be working with Severn Trent as a partnership. I mean, I would still be, I would still be working with Cal and I would still cooperate with him, still report things to him, you know, get his consideration on things. We worked pretty good together. So I really haven't given it much thought that it would create a problem at all if there was some sort of conflict. That's, you know, at some point, the board would have to direct me who the go-to person is to bring it to the board level. And, you know, we'd have to discuss it with him. Pretty much just like how we're operating now, you know, typically the chairman is, is involved in conversations if, if we feel that it has to be escalated to the board. I haven't given it-
Yeah, typically the chairman is the contact person for the manager.
Well, I always, I have, yeah, I don't think that, I really don't think we, she needs to have a contract. And I don't know why the compensation from year to year wouldn't be like the other employees. I mean, if we don't, we don't want to give the other employees raises at three percent. At three percent, the following year she would make from eighty-five, she would go up to eighty-eight or eighty-eight point five. And why are we going up five thousand dollars a year when the other employees have to only get a three percent and nobody even wants to give them a three percent raise? This is a government facility and not corporate America, so I don't feel that we should be operating like that whereas the chairman or the manager is making so much, much more than all the other employees and the board members that don't get, no one gets paid a lot doing this. This is something that you would want to do. So I just, I just have some issues with some of the things in here. I don't mind employing her, but I just think that we should, we should work this out- I don't mind employing her, but I just think that we should, we should work this out a little bit differently. If we could take some time and talk about some of the things and the way we want to put this together. And not try to push this thing today. You know, Abel, do you have a problem with that? That if we can get a chance to talk to some of the other board members, this is the first that we're, we're dealing with this. We got this thing Friday.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to talk to April. My understanding, two meetings, three meetings ago-
The workshop?
Yes.
Didn't start in the workshop?
That I was authorized to begin to negotiate with April for a contract. April and I met on many occasions. Tony helped us for hours. And the two of us, three of us came to an agreement that we felt was fair and equitable for both parties. I understand that you did not have this prior to Friday. And if the board, and this is a hugely important decision for the board to make and one that you don't want to make without giving it due thought and consideration. And I can understand if you want to put it off to the next meeting, but you have to also understand that April has to agree to that. The last thing in the world that I want, and I would suspect that you want, is for us to have to tell Severn Trent to start looking for a sixth operations manager. When we've had five, we have sat here now for over an hour listening to complaints from citizens about the fact that this organization is not running to their satisfaction. And frankly, it has never run to my satisfaction in five and a half years. And I think that April will be able to turn this place around and make it as something that we are proud of. Now, if she's willing, I will entertain a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Can I ask Tony something real quick? So Pam wants input into the contract. I mean, let's say we all want input into the contract. How do we?
This is the place to do it.
We'd have to do it right now during the board. So if there's issues that you have with a contract, we need to put them on the table. If it's contract versus a standard employee agreement, if you don't like the salary amount, then you need to say, I think it should be X. So we, we're not going to be able to get to a point where we all are all happy about this unless we voice our opinion and be very specific on what our problems are with the contract.
We are, and we've been doing this for a while, and that's why we have these meetings. So that's why we're saying that we didn't think it was going to happen this quickly, that we would probably have a couple of meetings, usually when we go through a contract. That's what we do.
And that's part of the problem with this board, is it takes forever to get something done.
That's the-
Sunshine law.
Yeah, the boon and bane of the sunshine law. You know, the public sees all that goes on, and sometimes it takes a lot longer, or longer than most people would like to have something occur. And as far as the salary range, there's an operations manager for Pelican Marsh. He makes a hundred and five thousand dollars a year plus a car. And that's the only, and plus some other benefits that he has. That's the only operations manager I know, quote-unquote, equivalent, that's in-house, in the districts that I represent. And that's, that's his salary.
Yeah.
I'd direct my question to you, because when Pam stated she didn't understand the five thousand dollar increment in raises, you said you could say, you could address that. I'd like to hear what your comment would have been on that.
For the, why we're going five thousand?
From eighty-five to ninety to ninety-five, yeah.
Because I think, if I'm not mistaken, April's current salary, or where she was at, is quite, is quite a bit lower than where she's at today. So instead of starting her at where, I guess, you know, commensurate to what she's getting paid today, it would just be an opportunity to get her, I guess, get her back.
Are you sure you said what you meant? You said that her opportunity previously was quite a bit lower than what it is today.
You meant higher?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Now we're trying to get it.
Yeah, I was kind of like, what?
Yeah, yeah, that was, I just missed that on that.
Now, I've sat here for about fifteen minutes patiently listening to all of this, and now I think it's a little bit my turn. Again, I expressed myself after being barked at before, and that brings out a little bit of the resonance in me. So this time, after that part has calmed down, we, again, a couple of very important points. We have a person who has, I understand, met with Bill, has Bill's approval, and a person that's got a tremendous amount of background. If you took a look at the email that we were sent with his resume, this guy's got a tremendous background. And in this, we haven't talked anything about, and as far as, and I don't, I'm going to try to stay as focused as I can. April talked about going and getting involved in the FASD type of stuff. That's, that's fine. It's in line, and whoever is the ops manager should do that. But again, for a mere pittance, I keep coming back to Joe DeSerrba. The guy does this, has done it for years. He teaches at FASD and has the capability of evaluating our staff. And if nothing else, working in conjunction with whoever we think is the better of these two that might be. And even if this turned out to be the person that we said would be the better operations manager, there still is a position that isn't filled where Melissa was.
It is filled. It is filled.
It is filled now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. But we need, if you're going to make a decision like this, you need to be sure that it's the right decision. And this decision and all of this agreement and all of this organization has been done unilaterally by one person with one other person. It needs to slow down, and it doesn't need to be rammed into the next meeting. It needs to be that there was an extension of three months, let the three months ride, let the new person come in, let us take a look at that new person, and at that time, that would be a reasonable time to make a decision.
Yes, I agree. And because of one of the organizational charts that we looked at, we couldn't decide on if the utilities manager and the operations manager were going to be on the same level, or how we were going to do that. So then we would still need to break down what their duties and responsibilities would be. So it would just be, I think, better if we, for the district in a whole, if we could wait. And April is still in the position, and she's still doing a great job. And, you know, I don't, I don't think we're going to get rid of April. We just want to see-
It's not within our purview to get rid of April at the present time. She works for Severn Trent, okay?
Right, exactly.
And if Severn Trent decides they want to send her someplace else, we don't have anything to say about it.
We do have something to say about it. Severn Trent can't, can't change the operators manager without us.
The belief, if he says that they could, the moment that they did that, I'm sure that Bill would find a way of telling Severn Trent that we'll fire Severn Trent. So there's always that type of thing. That's, that's not a threat. That's concocted.
You said you want to wait.
I would really like to wait.
Would you like to tell us how long you want to wait?
I would really like to wait to our original date when we said we would come to a conclusion. And I think we had ninety days on that. Am I correct, Margaret?
There was no connection between that. That's, we-
Yes, there is a connection. She's been extended in her position. She was extended in her position for ninety days. Let it go for ninety days.
And that would give us a chance to work this out fairly for April and for us.
How about the board members on the right?
I'd like to ask this question of April. With this being a three-year contract, would you be willing to have this be a one-year contract within option for the second two years?
Sure.
So that at the end of the year, if either one of us says, this doesn't seem to be working, the contract would be over, or if we said, you are doing a fantastic job, we made the right decision, we'll exercise our options for the next two years. Is that agreeable to you?
A year, a year is fine.
Pam, didn't you want just a standard employee agreement?
I would like the standard employee agreement. I don't think a one-year would do any difference. But the other thing is, I still would like us to be flexible with where we're going with April and exactly what she's going to be. Is she the operations manager, the utility manager? Do we still have that open as to how we're going to structure who reports to who? You know, I don't know. We don't know. We have not met this person. We don't know if he needs to be on the same level, if he needs to be over her, or if he needs to be with her, or if we're going to divide those responsibilities. April does a great job in the office administratively, and this guy has other experiences outside. So I just think that we, it would do us all justice if April could just wait and let us structure this thing properly, and you can help with that.
With a comment about that, how I see it is, part of the, part of what we're missing in this organization is we don't have any cross-training, we don't have any backup. We have, we have people in a position that they only know their job. They're the only ones. Some core responsibilities in the utilities department, very critical positions, that if we lost them, we'd be in a world of trouble. And I see the utilities manager and the general manager as, they are the two that you do the cross-training. And that basically, we are both going to have to know each other's jobs, you know, fairly intimately in order to have that redundancy in the event that something was to happen. And we currently are not achieving that, so really, the district needs two top-level managers. Our salary, our salary is what's being presented here, isn't that different. But typically, in an organization, there's not two at the top of the pyramid. There is one. And they, they often have to share responsibilities and, and, you know, cross-train in each other's areas. And so I believe that's what, that's what I'm envisioning in the organization.
Would it be beneficial for April to put her organizational structure together, her recommendation on what she believes?
I think she did. I believe she, she has.
Well, she did that at the working session, but it was, it was in conjunction with Severn Trent's too, I think.
I think we just, as a board, haven't agreed on which structure that we're going to go with. So I'm not, you know, we have this information, but we, as a board, have not agreed.
So when do we agree on it?
When we come to agreement. It may not, well, I don't know.
Let me ask a question a different way. What is your, over and over again, I repeat, there's not one of us that has the experience of running an organization like this. Not one of us. And that includes April, other than the fact of what she's done so far. Why is there this big thing, and I'm picking it up off of you, of not having somebody that has had the experience come in and actually set up the tier or give us the tier?
Well, hasn't it already been done? Didn't we get a report?
No, that was the last part that was supposed to be done.
Oh, he didn't do that?
Suddenly, there was this-
I mean, I have no problem with, I mean, consulting and getting experts to weigh in. I got no problem with that. The only thing that I have an issue with is, and I don't, maybe I'm just not understanding what you're saying, but I wouldn't hire, you know, let's say, Joe to be our operations manager.
No, that's not what he's saying.
That's what I'm saying, because we need someone in-house, day-to-day.
He's saying, once we get everybody in place, then Joe can evaluate both these individuals and, of course, everyone else, and give us a plan on how we should set this thing up.
Yeah, he just, Doug, he doesn't want, he doesn't want to imperialize this place.
Yeah.
He just is the expert, and that's recognized by the organization. But the fact that he actually runs an operation like this and has for years, that can sit there and see, your background is banking, right?
Operations.
Okay, so if that was the case, that's the kind of person that I'd be going to you to go, okay, set this up for me if that was the business I was creating.
Yeah, I just wasn't, and I read through his first, through his report, and I thought that's what he was on foot to do, was to give us recommendations.
Going to, and then it was diverted to something else.
Well, he actually said that he didn't have the time and he was-
No, he came back, Margaret, and said he would find the time as a favor to us and complete the job. And it was nine hundred bucks.
And my, my, the only discussion that I was having with Pam was, and it wasn't pushing back to you personally, I don't, I don't know how we get to, to the next point. Because if we can't communicate outside of the board meeting, how do we hash this out? And that's just me being, you know, being new to this.
Exactly, exactly. And that's, that's some of why I had asked Cal to give you a, the orientation package.
Well, no, I understand how a board works. I'm just saying how this board gets stuff done. Because no, you could either do a working session, we could get together, we could have-
We do have, we have working sessions.
The working sessions, they all have to be public. They all have to be here.
Oh, no, I understand that.
But again, we could sit down with all this stuff, and we're all just coming from our own fields of expertise as compared to sitting with one person that says, I've been there, I've done that, been in the trenches, still in the trenches, and I've evaluated these two people, and I've taken a look at the rest of the staff, and here's your organization. And then we make sure, and he also has the operations type of guidelines, because they've had it in place for years. We haven't, we've always been fractured.
I had dinner with Joe DeSerrbio. We were, he and I basically agreed on almost everything. His district, I think, is very different from our district. And I do think that he's provided a lot of good information in the document that he, he gave us. And, I mean, I have no, no issues of working, working with him and bouncing ideas off of him, whether or not we need him to, you know, come in and do a comprehensive evaluation. I mean, I think to truly evaluate gateway services, you know, you have to be, you have to be here. You have to see this day-to-day operation on what is going on and what the staff needs.
Well, he's already done a lot of that. I don't think we need that, per se. But I would still just, Bill, can we, we can even hold a workshop, but can we have time on this to put this thing together, to see how exactly we'd like to bring April on, to give this other person a chance to get on and go from there?
And maybe we could get Joe to do the evaluation and then do the workshop with he, her, new he, and actually do that as a roundtable session, so that we do like Arthur's roundtable, and nobody takes the end of the table and we work it out.
But it might be difficult for him to come in and do that in a short period of time, because I'm still learning. You know, I learn something new every day about the ins and outs of what we have to do here. And I've been here for over ninety days.
But April, he's been doing it for years. In another organization-
Are you talking about, are you talking about Mr. Sheemaker?
No, DeSerrba.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the new position coming in.
Keep up with us.
Oh, okay.
No, no, Joe just-
I was confused.
Okay, well, Joe, okay, I'm confused. I thought, I thought we just said that Joe's already done all of that stuff.
No. We're repeating the fact that the final part was not done, and it was- No, we're repeating the fact that the final part was not done and it was stopped.
If I could say anything about all of this, I think your folks are making a mistake, and I don't think Joe Di Servo can add a thing to our intelligence, and if we're gonna have to work on this, uh, employment, uh, we're just gonna have to, to, to knock it out. Not gonna be pretty, gonna be ugly.
So you're saying that somebody that's got all that experience, we shouldn't make use of him?
I am. I don't think he has that much experience to, to help us on this kind of an issue, frankly.
Okay.
You, you and I feel differently about it, there's no sense in further discussing it here.
Okay, I think we ought to get Joe Di Servo in here, and I think that the amount of money is absolutely a mere pittance. And at the end of it, if he hasn't done anything, you can give me the raspberries, I can handle that. But I think that, um, he definitely would be a phenomenal contribution and would expedite getting us through all this.
You're gonna make a motion to that effect?
Yes.
You just did?
I did.
There's no second.
I don't know if we need Joe Di Servo, what I would like to do.
No, please, make a, either a second or a motion, or let me say that it dies for lack of a second, and we're going, okay? I hear no second, motion dies now, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we hold a workshop on this to try to get it worked out as quickly as possible.
Well, with the guy before or after we meet the new person?
Oh, after we meet the new person.
Well, you just said as quickly as possible.
Well, no, I'd like the new person to come onboard, I'd like us to have a little bit of time, which will probably be thirty days or more, and to, to work on her employment situation.
Margaret?
I'm thinking. I'm sitting on the fence on this one, and I realize that. 'Cause we really have got to get this organization headed in the right direction, and I think April can be a big part of that. And that's why I favor this being a one-year employment contract with the option to change the title, change the position at the end of that two years, if that's agreeable to her. 'Cause we don't know exactly what the structure of our organization is going to be.
And it's, and it's not uncommon, even as a standard employee, to change job descriptions, structures. I mean, it's a little more difficult in a contract environment for us to say, hey, we've changed our minds, we'd like you to be, uh, Chief of Staff instead of General Manager. That's why, I mean, I'm, I understand the three-year contract, but I would be more in favor of an employment, an employee con, standard employee contract. Because what, I wanna show good faith on both sides. I want, I want this to be a three-year home, five-year home, ten-year home, if, if April is the, is the right person for this job. And just like many organizations, it evolves. I've worked for Bank of America, I've worked for TIA-CRPE, we go through twelve, eighteen-month complete reorgs and changes of titles, I mean, it happens. 'Cause your business has to adapt, or the community has to adapt as the environment changes. Um, so I'm not so hung, hung up in job descriptions or even titles, I just wanna get someone onboard that I feel comfortable with, that's gonna come in, do assessments, that's gonna hold us accountable as board members, hold the staff accountable, change the culture, and identify what we do well, continue doing that, and things where we have traditionally struggled to make those changes. And I think that takes, um, you know, someone with, with April's, um, approach. I mean, she's not a pushover, but at the same time, she's not hard to get along with, I think she's got administrative background, uh, in government. I mean, to me, it just makes, it, it seems like it's a very, it's a no-brainer for me, and I've spent a little bit of time with April. I don't think we need an engineer, I don't know, I've read through Joe's, um, report, I don't know if him coming back in and digging a little deeper, if he would truly be able to offer anything that we can't get on our own. Um, so, I mean, I'm in favor of a standard contract, um, standard agreement. And that's the only thing that, that I have to say on that.
I agree with it.
Can I have your definition of a standard agreement?
It's a, well, we're just, it's a, it's a direct employee.
Yeah, we generally don't, I don't know if we have a specific employment agreement, we have job descriptions, we say we hire you for this particular.
Yeah, we, here's a job description, you're hired for this role.
Correct.
We.
That's why I understand the contract works.
And I don't know, 'cause I just don't know the, the procedure here, but in order to terminate a staff member, if that requires a majority vote, and I, I don't know if that would have to be stipulated for, for this role.
Yeah, absent that, and, it would be termination as well, you know, it'd be a terminable, we'll employ unless we have a specific change in the job description, job duties, yeah. That, that's always enough achieved.
Now, and, and even the stipulations of hire would be, um, the salary, and if there's any additional, I mean, benefits. Almost the things we have in the contract, we could more than the employee.
That's correct, just a real.
Employee hire, so what you'd be losing is technically, um, is the three-year contract. And, and I have to think how would we do the, we'd have to agree on salary, and we could stipulate that it's an X amount percentage over a year as opposed to a, a, a defined amount, which, I mean, I think, and that, that would, that would be my recommendation.
Margaret, did I see you nodding, did you like that?
I like that, I like that, it's preferable to me to this agreement.
Can, could we, could we agree then, uh, Pam, what do you think?
I would really like to table this until, I, I would not like to vote on this today, I really wouldn't. I don't know why we have to.
Can we, could we give Doug the authority to work with April on, on a, one of the standard employment agreements that you were talking about that Margaret seems to like?
Do we have a standard appointment?
No, that's something we're working on, I mean, once again, we just have, we have employees come onboard, they, you know, we agree, we hire them in this position with this job category, these descriptions, we could take that, modify it, have a simple document.
Right, you don't need a, a contract, it's a standard agreement, we, you, you know.
Well, an agreement is a contract.
Right, you just wanna, you have an offer letter, you have to agree on what, she has to agree on what salary, um.
Could we have, would you agree to let Doug work with April and try and get this?
And, and Tony.
And Tony?
Well, Tony, yeah.
Would you agree?
I mean, here we go again with one person, you know what I'm saying?
Well, let's do this, let's, let's figure out how we can, let's figure out how we can come together.
That's why I'm saying, can we come back, you know, can we all, can we?
But we ha, in order to have a, um, workshop, that has to be posted.
Correct.
So the first available time for us to have a workshop would be?
The board, the board, what the board could do is continue this to a date and time certain for, as a workshop, or to continue the meeting to a date and time certain and hold it as a workshop, so not having to worry about re-advertising it. And I would suggest you could post on your website and post it to comments and post it all to district facilities, next week.
We could do it next week?
Yes.
I'd be more in favor of you working, creating something that we can work with rather than trying to have a meeting and we're starting from scratch.
Well, I, I just, and I'm fine with that.
Because I think you have an idea of what, what this agreement should look like.
And this is part of, you know, what, what I do, so.
Having a public meeting with a could you, would you, should you, is just gonna.
And the only, and, and the only reason I, I, the only reason I even said that is, I, I feel like Karen wants to offer some input, how can, how can I get? How can we funnel Pam's input?
I don't.
Right here.
Through you?
Yeah, right here, but.
So we come up with the first draft, we can send it out to the, the board as a whole?
I'm not, yes, but, but once again, the comments should all come back at a public meeting, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna have anybody saying there's an indirect communications issue.
So he can't.
I could have all the comments, but I wouldn't, I'd be uncomfortable drafting something in response.
So can I just, uh, a quick question, what, uh, are we okay with the, with the eighty-five base for salary?
No, started at eighty, it should start at eighty.
What do you mean it started at eighty?
It was that, the position was at eighty thousand bucks.
And what does that mean?
Now suddenly it's been bumped to eighty-five.
Okay, and that was for the Ops position, the previous role was eighty?
Yep.
Pam okay with eighty-five?
Well, is that what we're paying Severn Trent?
Well, of course you created it.
They're, they're getting a hundred twenty thousand.
Huh?
Severn Trent is, under the current contract is getting a hundred twenty thousand for that, as I read the contract.
But they're also handling.
No, I understand, but that's the number, so when you mentioned the eighty, that's a hundred twenty.
Is, is eighty-five a deal breaker? For the board, for the board?
No, but what is, is the CPA training? That has no benefit to us whatsoever, and we've never done that.
So, so us, us paying for CPA certification is a?
No, FASD stuff, that's fine, it's directly associated.
When we take April off-contract with Severn Trent, then how?
That's for, it's ongoing education.
Right.
Down by seventy-nine five.
Yeah, then we reduce the Severn Trent contract.
Okay. And how, with your, with the continuing CPA education, ballpark, I'm not gonna hold your feet to the fire, what kind of money are we talking about for that continuing education? 'Cause you said you'd do most of it online.
I don't know, it looks like some of the classes are like a hundred sixty-nine bucks.
Well, let's take that back and just look at it a little bit, let's deem what, what do you think is critical. Uh, 'cause even though it says CPA, it doesn't mean they're all, I'm realizing.
No, no, a lot of them can be a conference.
So I'll work with, I'll work with Tony if you guys are comfortable with coming up with a, a new draft. And I think what is important is make sure we've got roles and responsibilities, put in the shell around, uh, what the role is, what the org structure may look like, and, and according to, um, I mean, that won't be necessarily the, um, you know, you don't have a new org structure in your employment contract, but I think it would serve us to have an idea of what, what the hierarchy is gonna look like.
Yes. I think that would be very beneficial.
All right.
I'll be up here next Monday, uh, meeting with the Stonyburg folks at one o'clock, so after that I can, if you have time, Doug.
Monday?
Yeah, depends on how Gabby Jo McCaulka gets at that meeting.
Oh, Lord.
Plan on four calls.
Holy smokes, Margaret!
What are you changing? Just the, uh.
Thank you, Margaret.
We're gonna, we're gonna transform the three-year contract into what I'll call a standard employee agreement. It's just a, she'll be an employee, um.
Starting at?
Well, I think we'll have to, there will be a little bit of negotiation on that. Uh, I think what we, I mean, the range would probably be between eighty and probably eighty-five, that's, that would be the, the, the entry point. Uh, and then instead of having it at five thousand increment, we'll have to come up with a, with a annual percentage that the board would approve.
Well, if she's a standard employee, that's something that we would approve with the rest of the employees, isn't that right?
Right, as a standard employee, I don't, I, I, I think you're getting into more contractual type of stuff, and as a standard employee, I'd just be subject to, to what the general employees are.
Right.
I would be a general employee of the district.
Right, right.
There really isn't, there's, you're either a contract employee or you're a general employee.
So it's just really an, an offer letter and what benefits she has.
Yeah, and I guess part of it is, well, again, it gets into the, the description of her position.
Right.
If, if part of what's built in it, into that description or into the employee manual says that this position will be evaluated for additional compensation on an annual basis, you know, based upon performance, et cetera, then it would cover.
Okay, all right, so with that understanding, the rest of the items under five D are not to be considered. Uh, we're down to staff reports, uh.
Nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Engineer, thank you.
I don't want to get beaten.
Mr. Manischewski's gone.
I'll be beaten anyways.
Do you have anything you have to go five of them today?
My rotten son's stuck in a.
The financial report looks in good order, supervisor's comments, Gary, do you have anything else?
Well, I think I've said enough.
Pam, you have any more?
I'm fine.
Margaret?
Nothing.
Doug?
Nah, I'm good.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all, Margaret.